Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pounds. Enter your participant ID. You are in the meeting now. There are thirteen participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
Dr. Kerr, can you unmute yourself? And speak? Let us see.
Do you have me now?
Yep, we got it.
Um, should I hang up the landline or? All right.
Well, we have to wait for just a moment, Dr. Kerr, till we get all of our board back.
Got it. Just didn't want the echo from two different audio sources to make even more trouble.
Did we pinpoint the problem? What was it?
Operator error.
Okay. All right, that supervisor crew makes its way back up. Let's call the meeting back to order and we will go to our, back to our first agenda item with Dr. Kerr. And good morning.
Good morning. Glad we were able to overcome those technical difficulties. Please be able to give you a monthly update on the COVID-19 situation for Amador County. Here we are July 12th and sub variants of the Omicron strain that are more contagious and tend to evade prior immunity are continuing to drive high COVID-19 transmission activity here in the county with an uptick in hospitalizations. However, the impact is unlikely to be on the scale of the surge we saw last winter as we are better equipped to manage it. Immunity from vaccination and/or prior infection is still protective against serious illness and COVID-19 treatments are better and more widely available. Current hospital impact, there are three COVID-19 patients hospitalized at Sutter Amador. One of them was in the intensive care unit but is now off the ventilator and improving. So currently there are no ICU patients. The daily hospital census reached up to nine COVID-positive patients in Sutter Amador at the end of June. To date, three hundred and seventy-one, which is an increase of fourteen since last month, Amador County residents are known to have been hospitalized because of COVID-19. If you can show the Epi curve at this time, if you can overcome that technology. As always, the Epi curve that we publish on our website and update weekly shows the laboratory confirmed cases in blue and the probable cases in green. And you can see that the surge that started to tick up at the end of April has continued at a pretty stable level. Of course, we are not capturing the home tests in this data, so this is an undercount of actual case burden in the county. On the pie charts, we have the geographic distribution of cases by areas of the county and fairly evenly spread out. With the exception currently is we just don't have a lot of data coming in from Plymouth. And we have ninety-five active cases currently. On the CDC community level map, Amador remains at the high level. So masks continue to be recommended when you're indoors and public with others. Mule Creek State Prison currently has fifteen active inmate cases. And since last month, there have been no additional confirmed COVID-19 deaths for Amador County residents. So the total remains at seventy-eight Amador County residents and nine Mule Creek State Prison inmates that have confirmed COVID-19 deaths. And public health extends sincere condolences to everyone who's lost a loved one because of COVID-19. Moving on to the vaccine update, COVID-19 vaccines are now authorized for everyone aged six months and older. We continue to hold COVID vaccine clinics for those aged five years and older at the Health and Human Services buildings on Tuesdays from eight thirty to eleven thirty and Thursdays from one to four in the afternoon. The primary series and booster doses are available at the Tuesday, Thursday clinics. And you may schedule for an appointment by visiting myturn.ca.gov or calling one eight three three four two two four two five five to schedule an appointment at those Health and Human Services back entrance vaccine clinics. Those who have appointments are prioritized. Walk-ins must arrive a half hour before the clinic end time. Retail pharmacies also continue to offer COVID vaccines and availability may be checked at vaccines.gov. Parents who are interested in having their young children aged six months to five years old get vaccinated should talk with their doctor or may call the Public Health Department at two oh nine two two three six four oh seven to schedule an individual appointment. A parent or legal guardian must be present at the vaccine appointment with the child. Regarding where we're at as far as getting the population vaccinated, at this point, sixty point two percent of the population ages five and older in Amador County have completed their primary series of COVID vaccine. Seventy-two point two percent have had at least one dose. And twenty-seven point eight percent of the population ages five and older in the county have not had any doses of COVID vaccine. All of those indicators have improved by two tenths of a percent since the last update. The age group breakdown of those who remain unvaccinated is eighty-one percent of five to eleven-year-olds, fifty-one percent of twelve to seventeen-year-olds, forty-seven and a half percent of eighteen to forty-nine-year-olds, thirteen and a half percent of fifty to sixty-four-year-olds, and two percent of those aged sixty-five and older. The priority remains for those who are unvaccinated to get protected. COVID vaccines are available and free for everyone. The average first doses given per day over the last month were just two to four per day. Everyone ages five and older is recommended to get one booster after having completed their COVID-19 primary vaccine series. The timing for the booster, the first booster since the last dose of vaccine is if it's been at least two months since J&amp;J or five months after completing the primary series for Pfizer and Moderna. Anyone who's over the age of fifty should get a second vaccine booster if it's been at least four months since their last dose. Additional booster doses are most important for those who are over sixty-five or those who have underlying conditions that put them at higher risk for severe COVID-19 illness. Given the increased and high levels of community transmission, these groups should not delay getting their boosters once they're eligible. The mix and match option for adults to choose a different vaccine for boosters than they got for their primary series is available. When you come for a booster dose, please bring your vaccination card, a photo of it, or a digital verification showing the dates and the type of vaccine that you got for your prior doses. The COVID-19 mobile vaccine team continues to provide vaccination to homebound individuals who may schedule a nurse home visit by calling Public Health at two oh nine two two three six four oh seven. Going on to the testing and treatments update, self-testing options continue to be widely available. You may order, continue to order them at covidtest.gov for home delivery of at-home test kits. Those are free coming from the U.S. Postal Service. Antigen self-test kits are also available through the Public Health Department for distribution to the public, especially to local agency partners if they need. A quantity can request those through our Mohawk process. If you test positive, please follow current self-isolation guidelines and inform your close contacts. The OptumServe testing site at the back entrance of Health and Human Services Suite 500 continues to be open Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from seven AM to three PM. And you may register for a supervised rapid antigen test by visiting LHI.care or calling one eight 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 six three four eleven twenty-three. They no longer allow pre-registration for the PCR swab collection, but it is available there onsite by request for a send-out lab test if you need those kind of results. And masks are required at both the vaccination clinics and the testing site. OptumServe, all the OptumServe sites are now offering the test-to-treat option. For persons who test positive and are symptomatic that are at elevated risk for severe illness, they are offered an onsite telehealth visit to speak to a provider about the oral antivirals, Paxlovid or Monopiravir. And they'll leave the site with treatment in hand if they're eligible. The medications are provided free of charge. These treatments work best when started as soon as possible after symptom onset, and it must be within five days of symptom onset. It is necessary to bring a complete list of all the medications and supplements you're taking with you to the test site for the provider to screen for potential drug-drug interactions. Healthcare providers such as your own doctor or an urgent care clinic can also provide these medications, prescribe these medications to symptomatic patients that are at increased risk for developing severe COVID-19. Local pharmacies have the pills available for pickup with a prescription. And Sutter Amador Hospital also has Paxlovid pill packs as well as injectable monoclonal antibody therapies in stock to treat higher-risk individuals who present to the ER and that test positive for COVID-19. Prevention is still the best medicine. Being fully vaccinated and getting a booster when it's time remains the safest way to prevent serious illness, hospitalization, and death from COVID-19. Evusheld is an injectable medicine that is used to prevent COVID-19 infections for persons who cannot receive a COVID-19 vaccination for medical reasons or those whose immune system is not strong enough to mount a response to the vaccine. Evusheld is available locally at the Sutter Amador Infusion Center with a physician's referral. As COVID-19 activity remains elevated in our community, consider your own and your family's risk when making decisions about precautions. Those with higher levels of risk should take more measures, including always wearing a mask in indoor public settings and on public transportation. Be strategic about attending indoor gatherings or events. Get tested before and after gatherings or travel and stay up to date with COVID-19 vaccines. Anyone who feels ill, even with mild symptoms, should get tested and stay home while awaiting the results. If you don't feel great, please isolate. And are there any questions that I could address today?
Thank you, Dr. Kerr. Any questions from board members? Dr. Kerr, the, what I saw, the latest report was that LA County and possibly Sacramento were going to go to mask mandates for kids going back to school. Is that correct?
Um, LA County has a threshold that they had set out ahead of time. If they reach the high level on the CDC transmission map for two weeks in a row, they will institute a county-wide mask mandate again. There are certainly school districts throughout the state and the country that are making considerations for mask policies in the coming school year.
All right, thank you. Any questions in the audience? Supervisor Axe, did you have a question?
Yeah, just real quick, could you remind everybody when maybe the new updated vaccines will be available for boosters?
The committee that met at the end of June recommended to proceed with creating a bivalent vaccine for the fall that will include one of the Omicron variants that's circulating rapidly now. And the anticipation is that those vaccines will be available for use by October.
So with that said, if a person has not got their booster yet, their second booster, should they wait for that?
The recommendation currently is not to wait for that. That if you haven't gotten a booster since the beginning of 2022, that you really should go ahead and get one now because of the high levels of transmission. And then because we've seen immunity against Omicron wane after several months, particularly in folks in older age groups, the likelihood is that they will recommend the bivalent booster in a more widespread fashion come fall, regardless of whether you've had one or two or no boosters. If you only had completed a primary series, I think that once that reformulated vaccine comes out, there will be a broad recommendation for everyone to get it.
And those people that get COVID, are they building up immunities, do you believe?
Yes, there is some immunity that's conferred by infection, some immunity that is conferred by vaccination. And really the studies prior to these current immune escape variants were that those who had a combination of vaccination and infection actually had the most robust immunity. But any of the antibody-dependent immunities will wear off over time and, you know, make it less likely to prevent getting infected in the first place. Yes, the underlying cellular immunity, the T cells and the B cells will definitely kick in and prevent the more serious illness, hospitalizations, and deaths. But what we don't have at this point with any of the vaccines or currently even prior infection is what's called sterilizing immunity. So we are seeing an increase in reinfections, even in people who just had one of the other strains of Omicron in the past few months. This new strain that's circulating, the BA5, seems to be escaping that. It is still certainly much more likely for someone who's not been vaccinated and never been infected to be infected for the first time statistically than it is for someone who has some prior immunity. But we are seeing immune escape, and that's why it's so widespread.
Thank you. Jennifer, no one on Zoom? Yes, go ahead, Supervisor Ornato.
You have a question, Dr. Kerr? We're not keeping track in the county of adverse reactions to vaccines, is that correct?
We don't have that data at the county level from a, as an aggregate. We certainly track anyone who, you know, for example, we've had to administer an EpiPen a handful of times when we were doing the very large-scale hundreds of doses a day vaccine clinics back in the, in twenty twenty-one. And we reported all those to VAERS. Anyone that presents to the emergency room or they're, calls their individual physician is supposed to have a VAERS report filed, and actually individuals can file their own if they want to. We also have encouraged the use of the V-safe, which is a text message platform that you can sign up for when you get vaccinated. And you are basically sent a message once a day for about the first week and then once a week for about the first month and then about once a month for the next three months after getting a vaccine. And you self-report symptoms into that. But we do not have that aggregate data at the county level available to us.
Do doctors, you know, when doctors make a report on patients, do they make a note on if there's adverse reactions in their report or possible adverse reactions in their report on a patient condition?
As part of their medical record, yes, they would, if that is a consideration. And they should document that they filed a report into the formal reporting system if they've done that.
So that, and what would it take to trigger a report like that? A doctor's opinion or?
Um, yes, and also, you know, there are some things, like if someone who was recently vaccinated is hospitalized for anything that could be considered a vaccine-related event, that should trigger a report.
Okay, so it takes a hospitalization to trigger that type of report then?
That's when it's basically mandated to be reported. If it's, you know, a clinic visit and someone says, you know, I've got a big red swollen arm here. And the doctor says, I think that's related to your vaccination. That one, it's elective for them to report if it doesn't, you know, if it's not a serious enough to trigger, you know, an emergency room visit or hospitalization or, you know, sort of more advanced treatment.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Right. Any other questions? All right, Dr. Kerr, thank you very much for being with us and thank you for showing up at the fairgrounds and accepting your Golden Nugget Award.
Thank you.
All right, have a good day.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right, we'll move on to item five C, ratification of proclamation of emergency for the July fourth, 2022 electrifier. This is so, you can be eligible for reimbursement of expenses for that fire from OES. So, Mr. Ily, any updating, any prelude to this vote or just do it?
Uh, no, I'd say just go forward. I didn't know if there would be anything we needed to add. So I put it on open session. But I think everybody's still busy with it and we can give accolades and analysis later. And so for now, we'll just.
I'll make a motion then, Mr. Chair, to approve the resolution ratifying and extending the declaration of a local emergency in Amador County due to wildfire.
Second.
All right, moved in second. Any discussion? Any public comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Most carries, thank you. We'll go on item five D, update on tree mortality mitigation activities. And I see Dr. Harris, you're here in person today. Good morning. Yes.
Good morning. Chuck, do you have me on microphone?
Yeah, we can hear you, Dad.
Morning, Todd.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and board members. This is Todd Mason calling in. And of course, we're very fortunate to have Dr. Harris available today to present in person. He happens to be in the field, working hard on the Tree Mortality Program project. But before we have Dr. Harris present, I would like to acknowledge the stellar support that we've had from County General Services Office. Danielle Whitaker and John Hopkins continue to support this program unequivocally. And we really do appreciate their attention to detail on the contractual side and issuing invitations to bid. It's been, and we do appreciate that and do not take that for granted. Secondly, we've also got excellent support from the Amador County Transportation Commission. Cindy Angle continues to produce exceptional map packages that are key to getting out there and taking down these hazard trees. And then lastly, before Dr. Harris launches into the short slide deck, I would like to mention that we did meet with the Forest Service last week. Supervisors Brown and Ornato, as well as the CAO, sat in with us on July seventh. And Chuck, would you like for us to talk about that a little bit at the close of this presentation?
Yeah, let's revisit just to update everyone where we are.
Okay, we can do that at the close if you'd like. So, all right, with that, Dr. Harris, take it away.
Hey, thanks. So COVID has hit us. Actually, Ed came down with COVID about a week ago. And so I've been covering for him in the field review of the work that's ongoing. Right now, we have one project ongoing and he's working up on Meadow Drive today. I'll be up there to see how he's doing. So I have a brief presentation for you, just, you know, as usual, try to bring you up to date and. How this works here. Oh, there we go. Okay, since the project began, we've had twenty-six different projects, or since the program began really. And we've taken down eight thousand, over eight thousand trees. We've got the one project that's currently underway. It's up in the Pioneer area and Mason Meadows and that vicinity. Got a hundred and eighty trees plus additional trees. And I'll have to, I have to tell you, right at the outset, that this mortality issue is not over. And we're maxing out additional trees in every project, which means that we're allowed a twenty percent overrun on the contract to compensate for any trees that we find during the course of the project. And we're maxing out every project, which means that from the time that we do a survey to the time that we implement a project, we have additional mortality in the same areas. And, you know, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, Mr. Ornato asked me about red fur and, yeah, the red fur is dropping dead up there at the higher elevations. The white fur is also, it seems to be succumbing. But we've got some really upsurge in bark beetle activity right now. I mean, patches. Used to be, you know, individual trees here and there, but now we're seeing patches again, which was symptomatic of the early days of the mortality issues. So I don't know. This could go on forever, you know? I mean, it's really incredible.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a quick question? Since we're right here at this moment, in the Mason Meadows area, because of course that's where I live. I have a neighbor during the storm last winter, their top of the tree blew off. Is that, you know, something part of the beetle kill? You know, where it just, you know, it didn't fold over, it just the top of the tree, you know, just blew off.
The tops of trees are an interesting subject because we have top-killing beetles that are killing just the tops of the trees, right? And in the past, those trees would survive. What we're seeing today is that the tops of the trees die, weakens the rest of the tree. The beetles seem to migrate down the tree and we're having total mortality instead of just top kills. It used to be that we'd have top kills, especially at the higher elevations, we have top kills from the fur engraver and the trees would stay, you know, they'd be there forever. But that's not the case anymore. And as far as trees that get blown down, you know, tops blown out during these wind events, those trees then become susceptible to attack. And so we have to keep an eye on them. They're still going to be green, you know, even though the top is blown down.
These trees are just standing sticks right now. The, every green portion of it is gone.
Well, that'll be a candidate for our, for our program.
Okay.
Those would be a candidate for our program. The next, either, well, if you're in Mason Meadows, we might even pick it up now.
And that's what I'm kind of hoping for, so.
Yeah, maybe if you write it down, the address, I'll go talk to the contractor whenever we go back out in the field.
Okay.
And we'll check it out. Ed will check it out too.
One quick question for, on the, your comment that you're maxing out that twenty percent on every project.
Yep.
Is that problematic not to capture those other trees then? If you can only go twenty percent, should we be increasing that to twenty-five, thirty percent?
I mean, okay, so this is one of those interesting things because apparently if it goes over twenty percent, it triggers, you know, a contract amendment. And maybe John Hopkins can talk to this, about this. But we've asked for increasing that percentage, but it seems like there's some barriers to doing that. In Calaveras County, we've had it up to fifty percent. In other words, we've, the OES director has supported us with increasing the overrun to fifty percent because of this additional mortality.
I think we need our CAO to work with our general services director to, and he, John's very good at contracts. So maybe that limitation is there, but maybe we can overcome it too. It just seems problematic to me if we're not getting as many of the dead and dying trees as possible.
We're having to leave them behind. And it's, you know, it means they get deferred to the next project. And, uh, it's, you know, it means they get deferred to the next project, which, you know, there's a time lapse, right? So we're finishing up our last project now for this year. Next, during the, during the, uh, summer, we'll do another survey for product to line up projects for the next year. Some of these trees that are dying today will get carried over till then. And, you know, there's a risk. There's a risk that those trees are dead, they exfoliate, you know, they be subject, subject to blow down or, or whatever. So, yeah, I, you know, it'd be great if we could increase that, but that wouldn't apply until the next round.
Right.
Uh, because we're already in, you know, we're already finishing our, our last projects for this year.
Okay, we'll work on, we'll work on that.
Okay. Sorry for the divergence. Uh, so with the completion of the current project, we'll turn our attention to conducting another survey. And, uh, so the remainder of the presentation, I'm going to talk about our recently completed projects. And so Project fifteen A, three hundred and twenty five trees, uh, in the general area, you know, bordered by Highway forty nine, Taboo and, and, uh, Mountain Roads. The contractor was Ace Tree Service. They've done quite a lot of good work for us over the years. The project performance was between March twenty eighth and May twentieth. The cost was a hundred and six thousand or three hundred and twenty seven dollars per tree. Now, in perspective, though, the three twenty seven per tree is just the contractor costs. When we get to the last slide, you'll see what the total costs are, which is the administration as well as the contracting. But we're running around a little bit more than four hundred dollars a tree. Okay? As opposed to when we first started this whole program, I think we were estimating like two thousand dollars a tree. And I just saw a, uh, proposal from Calaveras Fire Safety Council where they're asking for four thousand dollars a tree. So, you know, there's economies of scale in this. And that's why we put projects together as, you know, as big as they can be, right? So this is kind of what it looks like. We took some trees down right by your administrative center. In fact, I think we freaked out the, uh, the, the, uh, county council over there because all of a sudden we're cutting trees and we got a call and somebody was saying, hey, what are you doing over there cutting trees down? I said, well, it's a dead tree. Okay, great.
You mean the district attorney's office?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the attorney's office, right, not the county council, not the county council, sorry. So, and then, uh, you know, we had trees out there in, in the neighborhoods as well. Um, you know, it's pretty easy to recognize these trees and when they're gone, everybody's happy, right? Okay, so Project fifteen B is, uh, the, the trees that were located in the general area bordered by Highway forty nine and North Shake Ridge Road. And the pro, the contractor was Atlas Tree Service. Atlas is a huge operation. And they're, they're actually the contractors at the Caldor Fire, um, under Cal Recycle. And I'm working on the Caldor Fire and there are contractors at Sierra Tahoe as well. And they, this is a big operation and they did a great job and they did it really quickly. Uh, and it, less than a month, they did, they finished that project. The cost was higher and I, I don't know exactly why. But I think, you know, because it's the, the bid price, their bid price for removing the add-on trees, the medium and large add-on trees were high. So we don't have any control over that, right? When the, the bids are, uh, put out and the contracts are awarded, they're awarded based on the base contract amount. And, uh, the add-on costs are not included. They're not taken into consideration. Uh, just to jump a little bit to Calaveras, in Calaveras, what they do is they take the add-on costs, they extend it times ten. They add that to the base contract to have a total contract amount based on the extended amounts. So the add-on costs are actually taken into consideration in the award of the lowest bid. Just a different way to contract, but in this case, you know, we paid a lot to remove big trees.
You know, I'll say this, um, Mr. Harris, I'd, I'd like to see at some point, maybe Mr. Hopkins. I'd like to kind of look at that and see what you have there because I know what Calaveras has works pretty well. So it might be something we should maybe look at, consider.
It makes, it makes the, the, you know, bid prices on the add-on trees more competitive.
Yeah.
Early on, you know, people were bidding really high on the add-on trees because they could see that. You know, they could see that they had add-on trees, you know, because they can make more money. So just, just, uh, something to look at, you know, we're still in this project, we can still move on. There could be changes that, you know, in how we do the contracting. Uh, Bunker Hill.
Can I just jump in really quick? So, so that issue about how you, how you set up the bid, it, it can go either way, right? So you, you include those extra trees in the bid and then you're paying more, then you award on the, you know, it, it, it's hit or miss. You have to pick one or the other. You can't. So you either have to award on the total bid, the base plus the add-on. And then if you get a higher bid because they, they jack up the price for those add-on trees, then you're paying more. And if you bid on the base, then you bid on the base and you, it, it, it's hard to predict and you can, you can end up paying more either way.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Not, it's not a, it's, it's not, there's no, in my experience, there's no clear, and there's no way to say that way is better than the other way because you're going to, you could get dinged either way.
Yeah, I'd like to look at it. I mean, I guess you, I guess you always have option of not doing add-on trees to get, to get too expensive, but then, then you don't get the add-on trees removed. Yeah, I understand the process, Greg.
Okay, so, uh, Bunker Hill, here you see a, an oak. Um, one of the interesting things about the oaks that, that we found is that, you know, if they're defoliated because of the season, how, how do you know whether it's dead or not? Well, the way we, we decide on that is if, if the mistletoe is dead, so that means the parasite doesn't have anything to feed on anymore, so the tree is dead. So that's kind of our, when we're choosing about whether an oak, particularly an oak is, um, you know, when we look at it after it's dropped its leaves, you know, we look at other signs like, um, that and also exfoliation of the bark.
Oh, when you get large oak trees like that, I mean, they're very valuable for firewood and can be used like that. But are they in those cases just disposed of like every other tree?
If you want the firewood, you can have it. I mean, in the right of entry form, it specifies if you want the wood, you can have the wood.
The landowner.
Yeah. And, and we've done this, you know, uh, in fact, we had one the other day, a huge madrone. And the, the landowner wanted it, but it seemed like, my God, what are you going to do with all this, all this wood? But our contractor, Ace Tree Service, in that case, actually bucked it up into like small pieces and left it in a nice pile for the guy. If you just leave the whole thing behind, it's, it's kind of intimidating. So we always have the contractor, if you want to have the tree, we always have the contractor bucket up so that, you know, it's, it's at least manageable.
Thank you.
Um, here's another one on Quartz Mountain Road, one of my favorite roads, Quartz Mountain Road, I have to admit. Um, some of these roads, well, Lectra is also a favorite. And, and, you know, we're talking about the Electra Fire. We just finished a project on Electra, on Electra Road. In fact, we had two projects. We had one on the BLM land and we won on the private land. We just finished taking dead trees out of there. So. Okay, the Shenandoah Road, and again, another one of these dead oaks. So Project sixteen is, uh, just done and it was the trees, uh, county roads in the area west of forty nine. Yeah, you know, all of these, this must sound like deja vu for the, for all of you folks that have been here, you know, as long as I've been here, because we keep going to back to the same roads over and over again. But that's just the way it is. I mean, in some cases, we've done these areas twice, three times. And you, we know, we're still going back, so. Uh, the contract on, on that was ace and, uh, project performance was about in a month, uh, four forty per tree contractor cost. And Michigan Bar Road, again, the oaks. And Carbondale Road, again, another oak. And then, uh, just to, you know, kind of depart for a minute here and talk about the new mortality. You can see here, where is the pointer? Oh, there we go. That's what I'm talking about, these top kills, right? So you have a top kill, that's, that's a, a pine beetle that's not normally a killer. But we got a top kill and it just migrates down the tree. And then eventually, you know, a month or two months or however long, uh, it takes, that tree's gone. Now, this is another dead, uh, pioneer, uh, in pioneer, a ponderosa pine, completely dead. These things just die like this. You know, it's like, we get a call from somebody and they say, hey, I got a dead tree. We, we've been there a week before and the tree wasn't dead. So it's like these things are really, um, moving along. And, uh, just to show you, you know, the kind of evidence we're seeing here of the western pine beetle, the galleries on the ponderosa pine. Um, we've taken a cruise up to Silver Lake and Bear River because, and Tad's going to talk a little bit about this Forest Service agreement that we're trying to put together to have the Forest Service offset some of the costs for removing the trees. Silver Lake is really getting whacked. And in the, uh, you know, the summer home tracks over there, uh, the people there are just freaking out because a lot of the firs are just, you know, dropping like flies. Uh, it's not so bad on Bear River, uh, but it's there. Bear River is, you know, experiencing it, but it, at a less, less, it's less extensive at, at Bear River than it is at Silver Lake.
What's the elevation at Silver Lakes is six, seven?
Seven thousand feet and more, yeah. So, um,
You know, one, one thing Dr. Harris thinks is going on, I mean, the amount of foliage out there is incredible. I mean, there's, there's way too many trees.
Oh, absolutely.
It's just, that's part of it. I mean, you got, they're all, they're all fighting for, for water and there's not enough.
Right, and, you know, the fuels reduction, uh, activities now, um, you know, private property owners are a lot more involved in that. I've done thirty equip plans in El Dorado County for people that want to thin out their stands because they, they, it's come to the realization that having too many trees is putting you at risk. So, so it's, uh, it's changing. I, I think landowners are much more appreciative now of, uh, the, the need to do and manage their property. Uh, this is, uh, a table. I don't know why it looks like that because it's just basically a spreadsheet, but, um, this is through Project seventeen, the total number of trees. So this doesn't include, this doesn't include the latest because I didn't have total cost information for the latest projects. But this just shows you that, uh, as of Project seventeen, we, we'd spent three point four million dollars. We've been reimbursed almost three point three million. And the total cost per tree was four hundred and two dollars. So, uh, we all work with Danielle and, uh, you know, since Karen left, Karen used to give me the total cost, uh, information so I could update this table. So I, I need to talk to Danielle about, you know, getting the total cost when we do the reimbursement request so that I can incorporate that in. And we have one more big reimbursement request to do for the four projects that we're currently finishing. Uh, and when we do that, you know, I'll be able to update this table and we'll see where we're at. See whether we're still at, you know, around four hundred dollars a tree or, you know, maybe more. So, hey, that's all I got.
Hi, good presentation, Dr. Harrison. Thank you for your help on that one issue, uh, trying to contact. Did you ever get in touch with that property owner?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Now, remember the, remind me of the details I can.
That one down on Jackson Valley Road where the.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Where they went in and cut down an, an oak that was already partially cut down, I guess.
Well, somebody went on the property, cut the tree down before we got there. And from, apparently the landowner saw them drive up in some funky old car and took out a chainsaw and cut down the tree. I don't know who they were or why they did it. We got there, the tree was already down. And our contractor, Ace, um, they bucked up the tree for, for the guy and left him, left it as firewood for him. So I think we're copacetic on that.
Thank you for following up on that. Supervisor Onetto?
You know, one thing I'd like to say, and I appreciate the process that, um, TSS has used, um, and the county put forth because I know I've seen some of the, some of the jobs that were done as far as tree mortality, um, counties put up one great, big, huge sale. You get a, you get a mammoth company comes in and it's just, it's a mess. Um, and you don't get many local people working on, you know, getting, getting to work. So this is, I've seen a lot of local people gotten, have gotten work from this, from these tree mortality jobs and they've done a very good job. And it's kind of been very manageable and it's been well-run and it's been, it's been a real benefit to the, the county and to the people, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the little spinoffs on this, too, is that, you know, sometimes like somebody's got a tree in their backyard that's not in the program. And when we're out, when we're out doing a project, I, you know, I just tell them, you can talk to the contractor, they're already mobilized to the site. If you can cut a deal with them, you know, to get the tree taken out at, at sort of a lower than market cost, so be it. You know, so be it. And the same goes for like taking away PG and E trees. You know, there's PG and E trees all over the place. And so if people want to have the PG and E trees hauled away, you know, we're open to having the contractor set up a different deal, you know, where they take the trees away. That's fine. And, you know, we encourage that, actually.
Supervisor X?
Uh, yeah, Dr. Harris, um, I guess, you know, the, the drought has, you know, been, you know, responsible in, in many ways for the mortality. Uh, and it's been a long drought. Even if that were to end today or start to end, then it's probably going to take how long for this to actually subside and go back to normal, like ten years, you think?
Well, you know, you're reminding me of my basic classes in ecology where they have what's called overshoot. So when you have a, some kind of a catastrophic event, then things have come back quite normal. It takes a while to come back to normal. And, you know, we thought when we had the rains last couple of years, you know, ago, we thought, hey, we're going to be okay now. But now we see there's still this cumulative effect of the drought that's making the, the, especially the firs susceptible. And we see this upsurge in bark beetle population. And we thought, well, we're, you know, we're going to be out of it. But, you know, I think it would take five years of returning to normal rainfall before we would find the bark beetle populations declining because the trees are more resistant to attack, um, that we'd have recovering trees. And, you know, from what we hear from this plant physiologist, these trees have issues like collapsing xylem, which means the water transmitting tubes in the tree are actually collapsed because of the long-term drought effect. So even if the water is available, it's not being transmitted to the tops of the trees. So, yeah, I don't know. I mean, I can't, I really can't say, and I don't think anybody knows, you know, what, what the recovery trajectory is going to be on this.
Yeah, I guess we're kind of rewriting some of the material that's going to go into ecology classes, huh? When things like that are happening.
Yeah.
Do we want to cover the, uh, meeting with, uh, about US Forest Service?
Uh, Tad, do you want to do a quick, uh, summary of that, that MOU or what can I?
Absolutely. Richard, step away from the microphone.
He already did.
I'm hard to shut up.
Okay, so, um, working with the CAO, Chuck and I convened a meeting with the Amador Ranger District and the Eldorado National Forest last Thursday. Uh, we were fortunate to have Supervisor Brown and Supervisor Onetto in attendance. The, uh, the objective of this Good Neighbor Authority Agreement discussion is to provide a mechanism for the Forest Service to match, provide a match funding to support this tree mortality program. And the best mechanism we could find is the Good Neighbor Authority Agreement. Uh, and just a point of context, since twenty seventeen, uh, Amador County has supported five projects on Forest Service managed lands up at Bear River Road as well as Silver Lake. And we've removed over thirty five hundred trees. So that is a lot of trees and the Forest Service has not had the mechanism to contribute to those costs. And now we think we found that mechanism with the GNA. We have set up a draft GNA agreement. This is based on some experience here at TSS Consultants that we have with Forest Service contracts. So we, we've already put together a draft and that is being considered by the Eldorado National Forest staff. Um, Rick Hobson, as some of you in attendance may know, has been promoted to the regional office, state and private forestry, and will be stepping away from Amador Ranger District here, I think this week. Um, and there's been no acting district ranger appointed yet. So we are now working directly with the forest staff on this project and are trying to expedite it so that it can be pushed through back to the regional office through the grants and agreements staff and hopefully, um, signed off and those matching funds can be made available. So that's the objective. Assuming this works out, and we're optimistic that it will, assuming it works out, we're also looking at this mechanism to potentially underwrite the cost of installing fuel breaks along county roads on, uh, Forest Service managed lands. So phase one is this tree mortality removal. Phase two, again, assuming funding is available, uh, federal funding, uh, could transition into a fuels, uh, treatment opportunity along those same roads. So with that, I will stop and field questions.
All right. Any comments, questions?
Uh, that, uh, we'll just keep, uh, working on that MOU with the Forest Service and, and bring it back to you when appropriate.
Yeah, hopefully that'll work out. Any public comments on the presentation today? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, Todd and Dr. Harris, thank you very much for your presentation today. And, uh, we hope Ed gets, um, out from under the weather pretty quick.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you very much. It is online.
Um, do we want to skip forward one agenda item? Otherwise it might, it's going to be quite a while.
And that's up, up to you. I think I'm, I'm-
I, I think it'd be easier to recall Mr. Hopkins than, uh, than the rest of the individuals waiting to address the, uh, weight rate adjustment. Agreed, Mr. Hopkins? Okay, let's, let's skip forward then. The board is in concurrence with that to item five F twenty twenty-three, proposed solid waste rate adjustment and fuel surcharge request. And, uh, Jeff, Mr. Gardner, come on up. And the rest, you might as well come on up too and get ready, whoever's going to represent today.
Jeff Gardner?
William, you can unmute yourself.
Director of Solid Waste. Trying to get Mr. Shone on Zoom here.
Why don't you go ahead, Jeff, and, and get started?
William has told me he is having a problem with his screen sharing, uh, so we do have-
He can screen share now. It was, it was not working because I had to shut him off because he was sharing his screen.
Oh, okay. Okay, William, if you can hear that, maybe you can share your screen. Uh, the packet has, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to let Jeff, but we're going to let Jeff give an introduction, William.
Let me, let me intro you, William, first. Uh, in the packet, we have, uh, uh, three things we're going to do. We have, uh, an approval of, uh, twenty twenty-three transfer, uh, transfer station rate adjustments. Uh, we are going to set a Prop two eighteen hearing, uh, for a solid waste increase and a special fuel charge adjustment. And you will be directing staff to mail notices, uh, to the affected customers slash property owners with a postmark of no later than July fifteenth. Uh, that being said, uh, it's, it's that time of year again for rate adjustments and it's also a time when ACES has come to the county uh, as a result of the increased fuel prices that they're, that they've been absorbing so far. And they had asked for a special increase. Uh, we, we met, we met as the Solid Waste Committee. We directed, um, ACES to bring the information forward. I brought R three onboard. They're the ones that normally do our, our rating, our rate increase review. And they did a fuel surcharge review. There's a report in here. My report and the memorandum basically just summarizes William's report. But I think William will give you the information that's necessary, uh, to understand where we're at in terms of the rate adjustment and the fuel surcharge increase. ACES is here to respond if you have any questions to that. Uh, we also have, uh, notices, uh, prepared in the back as well. So with that, I will let William go forward and give you an idea of what's in his report. William?
Great. Good morning, board members. I apologize, I'm not able to share my screen, but I understand you have a copy of our final report in the agenda package.
William, try, try and share your screen again.
I'm having problems on my end. I, I, I can't for reasons, so I apologize. Um, so I'll, I'd like to just briefly review our report and then I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Um, as, um, Skardner mentioned, we were, R three was engaged by the county to conduct the annual rate adjustment process for ACES solid waste collection rates in the transfer stations. That process, as you know, uses the refuse rate index, which is a series of indexes um, that are used to calculate the overall rate adjustment. Um, the review resulted in rate adjustments of six point three percent for both franchise areas one and three and a seven point seven nine percent increase for franchise area two. Um, the increase for pine growth transfer station was six point three seven percent and for the Buena Vista Wharf, eight point two four percent. So those are the, um, the annual rate adjustment calculations. ACES also requested a special rate review and the implementation of a fuel adjustment surcharge to address the current year-to-date increase in fuel costs, which are not accounted for in the annual rate adjustments I just went over. Um, the fuel adjustment surcharges, again, reflecting the change in cost of fuel um, from the beginning of the year to, uh, through year-to-date. For franchise area one would be an additional one point nine two percent. For franchise area two, an additional one point five seven percent. And for franchise area three, an additional one point three four percent. Again, if approved, these surcharges would be in addition to the annual rate adjustments for each of the three franchise areas and would be accounted for in the two thousand twenty-three rate adjustment to eliminate any double counting. So effectively, what the, the fuel surcharge is doing is adjusting rates now to reflect the, the cost increase year-to-date in fuel rather than waiting until this time next year to capture that cost, which would be the case, um, as part of the annual rate adjustment. So really, ACES is simply requesting, uh, an immediate or a more immediate, um, adjustment to reflect that increase rather than waiting until this time next year.
Um, so, uh, um, real quick, uh, so the, the fuel surcharge is really just for the remainder of twenty twenty-two? And then that's now embedded in the, the calculated rate adjustment?
It would be, it would be in effect until, um, next year when the annual rate adjustment goes into effect. And there is a fuel adjustment component as part of that. So that fuel adjustment component would be, um, would be adjusted to reflect the fact that the fuel surcharge, if you approve that now, was already put in place. So, um-
So the calculated rate adjustments that are here in the table, that doesn't reflect the, these fuel changes? So the surcharge is in addition to that?
Yeah, and I don't know if you have your packet, but in our report on page two, the, uh, the calculated fuel charges are listed below. And again, those are in a just, in addition to the annual rate adjustment.
Why weren't they just built into the rate adjustment at that time?
Well, the, the rate adjustment uses a lagging index. So effectively, there is a fuel adjustment in the annual rate adjustment, but that's for the, the prior year change. And what the, what ACES is requesting is, is to reflect the current costs change.
Okay.
That's, that's all I have. So I'm happy to answer any other questions the board might have.
I could add something to that. Also, the fuel charge, the fuel surcharge would go into effect immediately and the rate adjustments would not go into effect till January first of twenty twenty.
Yeah, twenty twenty-three. That's why I thought that, um, the fuel then would be built into it going forward, starting to one, January first, twenty twenty-three, but-
Additionally, William, can you, can you touch on, uh, the concept of the five-year notice for the service rates and for the fuel surcharge?
Sure. So, um, as the county does, it issues a Proposition two eighteen notice for the various rate adjustments. Um, the way the notices have been, um, structured, um, they're set up to, um, not, not simply um, provide the current rates that have been calculated, but also account for, um, future changes to those rates up to, I believe it's an increase of, uh, up to two percent annually on the fuel adjustment surcharge and ten percent on the annual rate adjustment for the next four years. So you don't have to do a, a Prop two eighteen notice every year, saving on cost. Um, that doesn't mean that the fuel charge would increase two percent annually or that the annual rates would increase ten percent. Only that if they did not exceed that, you would not have to do another Prop two eighteen notice. If for some reason the rate adjustments were more than that, um, then you would have to, um, issue a revised, uh, Prop two eighteen notice. But, but setting out a five-year Prop two eighteen notice with maximum rates, uh, or maximum rate adjustments is, is, is pretty common. Um, and again, uh, provides for, or eliminates the need to do annual Prop two eighteen, um, notices, which can get, can get expensive. So that's, that's the primary reason for doing that.
Effectively, if we did approve going that route, uh, we wouldn't have to do the two eighteen notices. We would still do the same rate review and all that each year. It would just be that if we didn't exceed the percentages that we've got in the current two eighteen notice over the next four years, then we wouldn't have to send the two eighteen notice. That's the only, the only difference.
Maybe I missed something, but why are the fuel surcharges, um, why, how can we get around sending out a two eighteen on those? And, because we're just going to implement those immediately, correct, on the fuel surcharges?
We are sending that. We are sending a two eighteen for the fuel charges. Those won't be implemented until the two eighteen. It's immediate when the two eighteen, when the, when we have the two eighteen hearing, not immediate as today.
Okay, I thought I heard it said that the fuel surcharges were going to be implemented immediately.
It would be as soon as the, as we have the public hearing.
Okay, very good.
Forty-five day wait period is up. And that public hearing would be September thirteenth, September thirteenth meeting.
You know, I've, I've got a question, Mr. Shone. Um, on your attachment D, it shows like Amador, Trinity, Eldorado, Tahima, Mono, Lassen and Del Norte.
That's my attachment.
Oh, is that your attachment? Okay. Um, well, Mr. Gardner, then, um, maybe Mr. Shone, and he's probably seen attachment D, correct?
Yes, I believe so. He's got a copy of the packet.
Yeah, it looks like, um, we're the second highest of all those different counties and some of those counties are fairly rural. I would think you'd be traveling quite a few miles to be picking up garbage in different places. Um, why are we almost the highest one? We're second highest?
Well, it depends on any, any number of factors, including the, the levels of service, the disposal rates, um, the amount of commercial businesses. So I can't speak specifically to why that is. Although, if you look at it, you know, the, while you are somewhat higher on the residential side, you know, you're, you're very much in the ballpark and similarly on the commercial side, you're, uh, you know, you're not widely different from those. So, um-
Yeah, we're about in the middle in the commercial. Um, and I just, I, I, I'm, I'm having heartburn because if you look at, you know, I mean, yeah, back, uh, going, skipping back to attachment C, there was a few years where rates went down or stayed flat, but, um, you know, look, if you include what we're, what's being proposed now, uh, the last five years, five years have had pretty substantial increases. Now, maybe, maybe we're behind in possibly the first, first, you know, say twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. But, you know, I'm looking at those five years, if I do some rough math, you're looking thirty, about forty-seven percent. That's a lot in my book.
Well, it is. And, uh, you know, the overall rates, you know, statewide have increased fairly significantly. Um, your rates were significantly lower for a long period of time. I think what you have to do is look at where you are now, which is attachment D, is the best reflection of, of comparisons, regardless of how you got there with small increases and then large increases. So, and again, you know, it's, um, you're certainly not widely different than, um, than the comparatives. Um, and that's just where you are in terms of the rate adjustment methodology. Again, the methodology does provide for setting rates to actual costs through a detailed rate review, which has been done periodically and, um, you know, may be done within the next several years, um, if requested.
William, a lot of those, uh, or in your estimation, how many of those counties actually have active landfills versus us having a transfer station where we have to be dependent on, on other counties accepting our waste?
You know, I'd have to look. I just saw this, uh, today. Um, some of them may, but, you know, transport is, is not uncommon. Although, you know, your material does go to the Sacramento landfill, Kiefer landfill, which is, uh, you know, um, not a, not a relatively cheap landfill. It's not exorbitant, but that, that does have some impact. But I can't tell you which ones, um, do or don't, or what their tip fee is regardless where they take it.
I thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any public comment? ACES, would you like to make any comments? You know, not necessary if you're-
David Button with Armanino. That's Steve, Chairman Forrester, members of the board. Um, just to expand a little bit on William's point regarding the fuel surcharge. It's designed to be adjusted. It's based on a single index regarding fuel. So every few months, the desire is to actually look at what's really happening. If it goes down, we lower it, right? So the idea isn't for it to just go up. We don't want to. We're already seeing some decreases, which is nice and it'll offset. As we said, this one starts October first, so the company's been fronting these costs for a full year. Any money received will be tracked separately than any other rates, which will then be examined by R three and the county itself. And it will be backed out of next year's RRI model. If you look at the RRI models that are in there, uh, you see something called the below-the-line item. That's where it'll be adjusted. So we'll take the normal increase and subtract it out. Uh, we've done this in the past for, um, adjustments to recycling processing back in other years when we couldn't get it through the rates in general. So as you know, ACES is doing its best to keep the things low. They're just trying to finance it currently. Um, technically, under the current contract, they could have come in for a full rate review because this, this actually triggered something. But in the essence of keeping the customers happy and not reestablishing profits and doing anything like that, we're just trying to cover costs to keep everything, to avoid the big years, uh, big year increases that we'd be looking at had we had to come in for a full rate review.
That's only done, what, every three years?
There's a special provision where if, um, certain costs exceed any giant average, like what's happening with fuel, we can request and work with this, uh, county. If, if the cost falls on the company-
Yeah, normally it's every three years.
Yeah, it's, it's longer. It's every four years normally. But there's an interim period. I think we're trying to do it five now. But if in the interim, a certain cost triggers this, we can come in for a special rate provision, which we didn't want to do. It would cost more, just like everything we're trying to do with the two eighteen notices. We're trying to eliminate these costs. We don't want to keep coming in and reestablishing things. So that's the intention of the company.
Well, I mean, we'll still get complaints when people are just getting tired of the constant increases, not in, just in garbage rates, but in food costs and gasoline and everything. So I can't blame people, but at the same time, um, I'm looking at it that you got, we got to cover our costs and keep the landfill sustainable. Supervisor Brown?
Um, not specifically on this subject, but, um, you know, one of the conversations that I've had in the past is green waste, you know, because of everything that happened this last December. We pulled out eight hundred and sixty-nine tons out of the up country in green waste, had it chopped up and then shipped out of the county. And we were able to do it for about a hundred dollars a ton. Um, I know, you know, you dealing with Kiefer. I'm wondering if there's something else that you can do under your policies to change that and assist. Um, what's getting rid of some of the- with getting rid of some of the green waste, because it's just green waste to get rid of at the transfer stations has been, has been hard, you know, for a lot of my constituents. And so that's kind of, you know, is there any, are you gentlemen looking at a different way of doing the process? Because the one right now is very expensive.
Well, Paul Mullenelli Jr., ACES Waste Services, the, the, the green waste that we collect from customers goes to, except for the pineals, goes to the sinis. So relatively speaking, since that's not exported out of the county, that's saving the rate payers' money by not paying high transportation costs, higher transportation costs. I guess if, if the, you know, and it's labor intensive on our part, you know, you know, tractor operators, things like that, to get it into the trucks, to take it even out to the sinis, is, there's a cost for that. You know, could we, could we make, reduce the, the fee for yard waste coming into the transfer stations? I suppose that we...
I, I'm just looking at it from what we did. You know, I have a product. We have documentation of what we did as a county becau- under an emergency operations.
Right.
And so we, you know, we still transported it out of the county to an intake facility and allowed this all to happen in roughly, you know, a hundred dollars a ton. So that's, you know, per say, what, forty-six dollars cheaper than what, you know, what you've guys have been able to do. So that's, I'm just looking at it from that standpoint, you know, a little pushing, hey, can we do something else?
I, well, I mean, we could, we could, we could examine things for sure.
I'd appreciate it.
We will do that.
Because we have a lot more materials in the pine country that I need to get rid of.
It never ends.
It never ends.
Thank you. Any other questions? Supervisor Orno?
Yeah, going back to that 10% increase, you know, maybe didn't hear you right or maybe I'm reading it different, but I'm just trying to remind. It says here, notice a proposed increase in garbage service rates, your little flyer. The Amador County Board of Supervisors will also consider setting a maximum annual increase to annual rate adjustment of no, of no more than 10% for January 1st, 2024 through January 1st, 2027. This is a maximum annual increase. Are you looking for up to 10% per year?
No.
No. That's not what it says. It says a maximum annual increase.
So the way, the way that the rate increase is designed is that if it does not exceed 10%, then we don't have to do a 218 notice. However, we will still be coming in and examining. Historically, if you look over the...
Are you saying does not exceed up to 10% per year?
Yes.
Correct. So the reason we put 10% in there was so we wouldn't trigger having to come back and do a 218 vote. So we put 2% for fuel and 10% for a garbage rate because we anticipate that any increases in the next four years will fall below those amounts. So we won't have to do a 218 notice. Those, those numbers are in there specifically to allow us to not have to go out and do a 218 notice. We're actually doing a, a five-year notice right now by doing it this way, which is pretty common everywhere now.
What's the cost roughly of doing a 218 notice? Do you know roughly?
I don't know what that, $2,000. $2,000 and, and a lot of time, staff time, board time.
It's 10%, up, up to 10%, that's a lot.
Right. We just pick that number so we anticipate.
$4,000.
$4,000. Any, $4,000 just in, in straight cost. That's mailing cost probably. The 10% number is just a number that we anticipate we won't succeed. We haven't. And if you look at the average, we're actually, except for the last few years, we've, we've been averaging about 4% a year over the last 20 years.
So the, the actual increase will be dependent on the process?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And it, the, the, the notice is just to give us...
No, I, I understand that. Yeah. I'm just looking, you know, last five years, what you're proposing goes forward. I mean, you're looking almost at five years, 50% increase. And I understand, I understand we've been seeing some pretty high cost of stuff, but that's, that's a lot.
As you may recall...
Airboard, I understand that. You have airboard fuel prices.
Well, back in 2018, I believe there's like in there a very substantial year, right? It's 13.66. But at that time, it was determined, tonny rates were substantially below where they needed to be. And we reached a sort of agreement, and that, what, what happened was it sort of compounded itself for the next couple of years. But we're seeing flattening, save for uncontrollable costs such as landfill, was the big factor in the prior year. This year we're seeing fuel. It's, it's just certain costs are doing it that are beyond the company.
I don't have a problem with fuel, but you're talking, you know, what, two and a half percent roughly, I think?
Well, last year, I believe we, the original cost prior to the Kiefer increase, when we came in, was in the low 1% to 2%. And after just the significant increase from Kiefer by itself, we had to come back. And that, that was actually sort of a delay in the entire process with the rate adjustment last, was it last year?
It was 2020, 2020.
I'm sorry, 2020 was like, that was a big jump for us.
Kiefer raised their rates 40% that year.
Yeah, and they've gone up.
First time in a long time, but.
Then you have a 2020, you know, 17.4%. I mean, that's...
Well, it's not only Kiefer, it's what happened to the recyclables market.
Exactly. It's compounded.
Supervisor Crew?
No, I think we're discussions about exhausted, but I'd like to take, ask for public comment one more time. Any public comment? None? Go ahead, Supervisor Crew.
I would make a motion that we approve the three steps. One, approve the 2023 transfer station rate adjustments. Two, set Prop 218 hearing for the solid waste rate increase and special fuel charge adjustment. And three, direct staff to mail notices to affected customers, property owners for the postmark no later than July 15, 2022.
There are second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Others in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nope.
Any reason for that no, other than you're running for reelection?
No, it's not that, Richard. I do things like, like I see him.
Okay.
I don't appreciate that comment.
Well, we'll put it on the backs of the other four supervisors then.
No, I, I, I just think.
I don't appreciate that.
It needs, it needs to be looked at. We're getting an increase or just too much.
Yeah, I, I feel the way too.
I mean, you look at that, you look at that, I mean, it's, and I, and I do understand, yeah, fuel price have gone out of sight. No, I don't argue that. But you're looking at what, over probably about 50% in five years? I mean, people are getting squeezed?
I ran the factors. At over 20 years, rates have gone up about 100%.
Okay, motion carries four to one. With that, we will take, let's try to keep our break as short as possible, about five minutes.
And I'll make you a deal. If you want to vote no, I'll vote yes.
I just think, no, I'm going to vote the way I think I need to vote. So we'll take about a six-minute break. Come back at 10:45.
Well, I mean, we put 10% in there was so we wouldn't trigger having to come back and do a 218 vote. So we put 2% for fuel and 10% for a garbage rate because we anticipate that any increases in the next four years will fall below those amounts. So we won't have to do a 218 notice. Those, those numbers are in there specifically to allow us to not have to go out and do a 218 notice. We're actually doing a, a five-year notice right now by doing it this way, which is pretty common everywhere now.
What's the cost roughly of doing a 218 notice? Do you know roughly?
I don't know what that, $2,000. $2,000 and, and a lot of time, staff time, board time.
Call the Board of Supervisors meeting back to order and go to our 10:30 time certain code enforcement hearings. We have four of them. And Michelle, good morning again. We'll go with Item 6A, Code Enforcement Discussion of Possible Action Relative to Adoption of the Administrative Hearing Board's Findings and Recommendations without further notice or hearing or setting aside the matter and scheduling a future genovale hearing before the Board of Supervisors. That's the only time I'm going to read that portion on the subsequent hearings, but this one is regarding APN 023-600-023. This is case C-22-4, Canterbury Road Pioneer. Lots of poor cases, lots of paperwork.
Good morning, Board. Michelle Galler, Code Enforcement. Before I start, because all the cases meshed together, I kind of just wanted to give a quick little thing that's going to make everything clarify so I don't have to repeat it for each one. So obviously, I'm bringing for you four cases to our occupied trailers and to our illegal occupancy of a tr- a structure. I wanted to note that all these cases are zoned vacant and do not have a legal residential structure. They have not contributed to the impact fees or the property tax costs that a residential property has to pay. Some of the properties have legal power, septic, and sewer, but this will not affect the decision that will need to be made today because each of these cases only have two options, and they are to obtain a building permit, pay the fees, or to vacate their property by securing it from illegal occupancy, and disconnect any connections to avoid further violations and complaints. None of the cases qualify for the planning department's exemptions, which are required, which require a legal residential structure to apply for. Currently, the minimum square feet to build a home is 800 square feet. The Planning Commission is also going to bring forth to you to help those living in the trailer to bring the square footage down to 360. This will require submitting building plans, pay the fees to the building apartment, and then submit an application for living in a trailer while building to the planning department. This process will remain the same even if the square footage does not change. They will also need to get a septic disposal system permit from Environmental Health in order for the application to be approved. In all four cases, no one has presented me with documentation. Actually, one has just this morning, or proof that they have illegal residence. I did inform each of them this would be helpful in showing proof instead of relying on hearsay. I'll now provide details for each case. I'll now provide details for each case. I also wanted to bring forth too about an issue that I've seen at several of the vacant lots, especially pertaining to the occupied trailers. All of the situations have had domestic animals either tethered to a tree, placed in a dog kennel, or roaming free in an area set up with hardwired cloth that all the owners say they come in every day to take care of their domestic animals. And some of these people are saying they travel from low di just to do that. This is not livestock. These are domestic animals, or domestic animals not used to protect livestock. I have had conversations with the Director of Animal Control and expressed my concerns of these animals being left alone to defend themselves in a rural area with no legal residential structure. In all of these cases, it has resulted in them living on their property illegally. I just would like the Board to consider maybe having an ordinance not allowing domestic animals being left alone on vacant parcels. Thank you. Also, our first case is Amador County versus Hopper 2000 Limbey Trust, this is Johnny Hopper, the owner. This is for an address located at 24770 Merlin Drive Pioneer. On April 7th, the county staff visits the subject property and determine that an occupied recreational vehicle was being used on the subject property in violation of County Code Section 19.48.080G1. On April 15th, 2022, the county sent a notice of violation regarding the unlawful occupied recreational vehicle by certified mail to the landowner. On or about May 18th, the county sent the landowner via first-class mail a notice of proposed abatement of code violations and notice of intent, and the notice was also served by the Sheriff's Office. On May 31st, the landowner submitted a written request to appeal the violation. Staff did provide significant legal notice to the landowner of this, of the first hearing as well as this hearing. The Hearing Board finds that the unlawful recreational vehicle violates and continues to exist on the subject property. I do have, in talking to Mr. Hopper when he was here at the hearing, he does recognize obviously that it is in violation. I am going to have him come up here, but I did want to just let him know while I was here, I did do some research on senior center Victory Village because he is a veteran of lots of resources that actually can help him assist in transitioning into a substantial housing, an actual permanent living, or maybe helping with obtaining, if the square footage goes down, or even a program that helps fund down payments or rent. So I do have this information for him that he can go out and talk to these resources to be able to use them to help him out in this situation. Is there any questions?
You know, I had one.
Yeah.
There was a statement you made before going into this hearing about, I believe that was from, that was from you, wasn't it, as far as how the code and how things work? And then you stated that you'd like to see an ordinance passed that domestic animals cannot be left alone on vacant parcels?
Correct. We did not have one of those. I talked to the Animal Control Director. Only one of the situations were they able to assist me, which was the dog that was tethered to a tree.
Are you requesting, are you requesting that from the Board then, or?
Yeah, I'd like the Board to reconsider about, because there's not an ordinance for that, for them to consider about domestic animals being left by themselves on vacant parcels.
You're talking dogs, cats, horses, maybe even cows?
No, no, no. I'm talking about what I've had there has been chickens, ducks, dogs, cats. Those have been the items that have been left on the property.
A lot of, I mean, I don't, yeah, I won't get into it, but it seems a little, I don't, I think it's.
Again, animals that.
It's a way overreach.
That are dependent on you feeding them every day and stuff is the ones that I'm talking about. Horses, chicken, livestock, I'm not talking about livestock. I'm talking about domestic animals that need that everyday care that shouldn't be left alone to defend themselves.
Well, if horses or cattle are in a pen, they need to be fed every day, though.
That's livestock, so I'm not, I'm not talking about livestock. Let's consider livestock.
Okay, just as long as you realize that.
Yeah, that's why I'm trying to be very specific as to animals that, you know, require your care every day as far as, that can't defend themselves. If there's a cattle or whatever with a cattle dog, I understand that, but these are animals that are just being left by themselves on a vacant parcel tethered to a tree, that's not appropriate, that there should be something that allows that not to happen.
Any other questions? Any public comment? And back to the Board for decision.
Is Hopper here?
Yes.
Well, I asked for public comment. Mr. Hopper, would you like to make any comments?
And Johnny, I'm going to leave this resource right up here for you to take. Okay?
Morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you, thank you for giving me the time to speak today. I appreciate that. My name is Johnny Hopper, and I'm the one that lives on Canterbury Road. I'm 72 years old, and I live alone. I've lived in that exact footprint, in that spot, for 20 years. That's my home. May not be as nice as I'd like, but for right now, it's my home. It's all I have. I've worked really, really hard in the community and on my property. I don't have the money to hire these brush eater companies, so for 20 years, I've been clearing brush and trees by hand, and then I borrow when I'm allowed to in the wintertime, and I do it alongside the roads in the neighborhood. I have three different privacy walls that I've built that have climbing flowering vines on them, so my place should not be an eyesore to anyone. And like I said, I've lived there 20 years, and it's, it's never been an issue. In that 20 years, I've paid oh, about $60,000 in taxes. And one of the things that I find is, is that most of the people that own land in Amador County have no idea they can't camp on their own land. There was five acres just sold not too far from me, and the guy is just beside himself when I told him, because they come and camp a lot. They have a really nice setup and, and, but people don't know. I didn't know for four years after I bought my place, because I knew I was going to have to live in an RV for at least a couple of years, you know? I even went down and tried to get a permit to live in it, and they told me I couldn't get it unless I had a permit to build a house. Well, I did what I had to do. It's, it's all I've got. I'm not a burden to anyone. I, I live, I'm a, I'm a disabled veteran, and I live on my social security and, and a little bit of disability money that I get. If, if I'm evicted off my property, I'm, I'm going to become a burden to someone, and I've never been a burden. I'm one of those people that help other people. Never been a burden to anyone. I have 40 acres back in there, so it's not a small space. And to really see the space, you have to drive a quarter of a mile down a winding driveway to get there. I'm pretty much at the end of the road. It's not a gala manor type neighborhood. It's freaking wilderness. I've got bears and mountain lions in my yard nightly. I have pictures of them. I can, you know, I can prove it. But like I said, I have no other place to go, and I don't want to die on the street. I fought for my country, and I deserve a little bit more than, than what I'm getting. I can't afford two places. I can't afford the place to rent and, and then my mortgage on, on my 40-acre parcel. So I mean, I've thought through that whole thing, and I just, the finances just, just aren't there. They're just not there. I can't hold a job any longer. I've gotten enough health problems, and now I take 11 different medicines, and I don't know how I'm going to manage that if I'm homeless. Every morning, I have a machine that the VA sent me because now I've developed a heart problem that's new. And I have a machine that I have to hook up to every morning, and it takes all these readings and sends them via internet to a healthcare team at the VA. Oh, I need the internet. I have to have some electricity. If I miss it, they're not kidding, they're serious about this. If I miss a day of, of taking my, my readings and sending them in, they're on the phone wanting to know what's wrong. But I need some stability to be able to take care of myself. I just had a hip operation, got another one coming up. Now I gotta have a heart operation, and I had a stomach operation scheduled for July the 6th, but I found out that I was still going to be possibly in the hospital. It's a bad one. I was going to be in the hospital, and I didn't get to come today and talk, so I postponed that for a month, but I still have to go through that. I've got to have a place that I can recover. There's never been any argument that, that I'm breaking the code. I've never argued that. I've known for a long time that, that I was breaking the code, and I've gone down over the years at different times thinking maybe they had changed up and felt a little different about being able to get a, a permit, you know, to live, to live in my trailer legally, and it's just never, it's just never done. I understand that we have to have rules. I, I, I get that because people will do weird things if they don't have any guidelines. You see that every day. But this, this is a, a bad code. This code is, is, is bad for the citizens of the county, and it's bad for Amador County. Amador County is the smallest landmass county in the state out of 58 counties. It also has the oldest median age and the lowest median income. We've got thousands, trust me, thousands of people in this county that are living in trailers. This code is selectively enforced. I'm unlucky that I have a grumpy neighbor, but there's thousands of us, literally. And I would ask that, that, that you really look, look this code over. There's got to be, there, everything can't be black and white. There's got to be some room for exceptions under extenuating circumstances. Now, the economy's hurting, you guys have been talking about it this morning. Oh, by the way, it seemed like everybody that came up is asking for money. Can I get in that line somewhere in there? Uh, there again, just, it's, it's the code. I'm, I'm asking you to really take a serious, hard, long look at that, at that code because it's, people just don't know. And then they get caught, you know, or something. I don't, I don't know what I did. I don't know what I did. I've never done anything but work in the community and, and on my property, so I wasn't a problem for anybody. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, sir.
So Johnny, before you leave, I believe that at the hearing, you said that you could possibly be, look into a, a smaller place, you know, a 360 square foot place?
I did look into that, and, and I decided that I'm just going to sell the place and leave. I'm, I'm, uh, I'm just at that point.
Okay.
So now I'm just trying to get it cleaned up and, and get rid of a couple of cars that I have that I'm, that I've been working on. I've already gotten rid of one of them, and I've got a boat that a guy's coming to pick up, and as soon as I can get it cleaned up, it's going to go up on the market. I don't want to stay here.
Okay. So when do, when do you think that will happen?
I work every day now, trying to get it cleaned up. How long it'll take to sell it, I don't have a clue.
Okay.
I don't, there's not very many 40-acre parcels that I can find up country.
Right.
So, you know, it has a good road to it. I work to, to get a ten pole extension in the power lines, and then I got everybody whose property that it could service to, to sign up and get a transformer and a meter and, and put up $2,500. And I worked for four or five years with PG&E getting that done. His first three years, I ran off a generator. I didn't, I didn't have anything. But I, I don't know, is the answer. I don't know how long of a timeframe it takes to sell a piece of property. But, but, but the intent is, is that by the time I'm gone, the trailer will be completely out of there, everything, because I just want to leave it, you know, looking like something might have been there at some time, but the trailer won't stay.
Okay.
The trailer will not stay. It's, it's, it's beginning to get in bad shape. Like I said, I, I've lived there on that footprint for 20 years. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity.
Supervisor X, from the Hearing Board side, with that said, I, I don't know. I mean, you can look at given extensions, but this kind of delays the ultimate conclusion.
Well, you know, the, the thought was that we are looking at a smaller square footage footprint. If he wanted to try to move forward with building a place of that size, then we could maybe provide a window of opportunity, especially with some of his upcoming stuff, but it doesn't seem like he's going to do that. So his plan is to leave. So I, at least that's what I'm, I'm hearing, so.
Michelle, can I ask you a question? I mean, one thing Mr. Hopper said is on that there's a lot of people living in this condition, but the biggest problem for the county and for the neighbors are what happens with the environmental conditions there with the people are, and I'm not sure he's in this case, but people are containing their effluence and the trash that could build up. That's usually the prob, two problems that we see.
Use of generator, possible fire, yeah.
So there's a number of issues that affect the life safety of other people too, and the environment, so I'd rather, I, I'm not saying you're in that situation, Mr. Hopper. I'm just saying overall, those are usually what we see in these cases. So Board, any further discussion?
Well, I think we probably wouldn't be here, you know, if neighbors didn't have some concerns, I think, up there. I do feel for Mr. Hopper's plight. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a place, it's not a situation like being in. What I don't like, and I, and also, I feel for in the situation he's in, but it's, it seems like there's, there's, people have some issues, what's, 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 what's going on up there? It's, I, I, I see both sides of it. I mean, you got people that are homeless on the streets all over. Yeah, just, I don't, I don't see a good answer.
Your mic, or?
I got up this morning about 5 o'clock looking for some clarity on this, all of these.
I got up this morning about five o'clock looking for some clarity on this, all of these issues. And I really can't wrap my head around that being non-conforming is worse than being homeless. And we're still gonna have costs and affluent charges and all of that with the homeless situation. So I was hoping that he thought the three hundred and sixty square foot would be maybe a solution. But his statement was that it wasn't. So he's kind of put us in a really tough spot.
Well, the only other thing we could do is since he, his intent is to finish cleaning the property and sell it, possibly we could give him an extension till the end of the year to get that done. And if that does not happen, the sale of the property, then we continue the action.
That'd probably work.
Yeah, I'd be more amenable to something like that.
Because I will, I will say, I think allowing people to make, to build smaller houses is, cost wise, is a lot more effective than, you know, I mean, a lot, a lot of times people don't need a great big house. They just need a kitchen, bathroom and a bedroom.
But his intent, it sounds like, is to sell the property. So.
I think that'd work, Richard.
Well, I would need a motion, um, to set aside the matter and, um, allow Mr. Hopper to have till a date certain, probably December, January first or December thirty-first to, uh, culminate the sale of this property and, um, the cleaning up of the property.
Is that to be out by that date or to just, you're just saying to sell it, to get it sold by that date?
Well, I think, I don't think there's gonna be a problem selling that property.
Yeah.
I'd buy it if I liked bears and mountain lions.
Yeah.
But I don't, so. But a lot of people do.
Well, I'm, I'll make that motion then supervisor Forrester to, um, provide, uh, Mr. Hopper until December thirty-first, um, to, uh, clear, clear his property or continue to clean up his property and, um, move out.
Through a sale of the property, I guess, or?
At, at least have it on the market.
Whatever.
But, uh, he should be moving out at that point.
So just to clarify, do you want to continue this hearing and then come back in January?
Why don't we come back in January?
Just put, plug a date into this order?
Maybe the, so do we need a date certain for the agreement?
Uh, yes. Because you had to do, so they don't have to do the note. You don't wanna have to do the notice again.
Yeah.
So would it come to the board of supervisors or would it come to, uh, abatement?
This would be the first meeting in January.
So when is our first meeting in Jan? Okay, so let's continue this until January tenth. With the understanding that Mr. Hopper is going to, um, vacate the property and, um, uh, and put it on the market for sale.
Your second.
Second.
Right, moved in second. Does everyone understand the motion? Mr. Hopper, is that the motion that was made pretty clear? We're giving you a little time to, to try and, uh, take care of your property, cleaning it up and try and culminate with a sale. So. All right, uh, any further comments? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I oppose. Much carries. You, and we'll go on to item six D. This is, um, property on Old River Road, Fiddle Town.
So this is case, uh, Amador County Conformist versus Todd Masterson. Uh, recall, again, recorded, uh, located at one seven eight zero one Old River Road, Fiddle Town. Uh, the owner of the subject property is Todd Masterson. On February eighth, twenty twenty-two, county staff visits the subject property and determine that an occupied recreational vehicle was being used on the subject property and that landlord was maintaining an unlawful junkyard. On February eighth, the county sent a notice of violation regarding the unlawful occupied recreational vehicle and unlawful junkyard by certified mail and first-class mail to the landlord. On May sixth, the county sent the landlord via first-class mail a notice of proposed abatement of co-violations and notice of intent to record a notice of violation related to the unlawful junk sections nineteen point zero eight point three five five and nineteen point zero eight point three six zero and unlawful recreational trailer section nineteen point four eight point zero eight zero. The notice was also posted on the resident. On May twentieth, twenty twenty-two, the landlord submitted a written request to appeal the violations. June seventh, the landlord complied and is in compliance with the junk co-violations. So again, we're just here for the occupied trailer. Uh, staff was provided significant legal notice of the last hearing and today's hearing. And the hearing board finds that the following violations continue to exist on the subject property, which is unlawful recreational vehicle. Um, at the hearing, Mr. Masterson had expressed that he obviously has been on the property more than the sixteen standard days and understands that he is still in violation. So I believe he is here today as well. Uh, any questions for me?
Yes, I have one.
Yeah.
You said, the way you stated, it sounds like you can't be in property more than sixteen days?
I'm sorry?
Well, your statement, it, it sounds like you can't be in property more than sixteen days?
Correct. That's in the code.
Well, I can't go to my property?
You're talking about living on the property.
Yes, correct. Being there, it.
Camp on your property for sixteen days?
Yes. And he's admitted that he's been there more than sixteen days already.
Okay.
At the hearing, yeah.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. Todd Masterson, one seven eight oh one Old River Road. Uh, my turn to speak.
Yes.
Okay. Um, dito on, on Mr. Hopper. I'm a retired master sergeant from the Marine Corps, twenty-one years, disabled. I fought for what I got, for everybody in this room. I don't understand why I can't be on my property. I'm trying to build, yeah, well, COVID came, things shut down. I changed my mind. I'm gonna put a shed over my trailer. My trailer is authorized on the property. I'm just not authorized to be in it. What I'm asking is use the, the facilities. I, I don't have far to go between where I live, where my house is. I'm back and forth all the time. Um, it should be nice to be able to use my stuff on my property that I paid for. Uh, uh, I changed from wanting to build a house. When, after the COVID hit us, I, I had a lot of dead trees. And I just decided I'm gonna start milling some wood because the lumber prices were out the roof, quadrupled. Um, so I changed it to building a, a little structure to cover my trailer, protect my assets. Uh, with a shed on one side and a lean-to shelter for the trailer on the other. It is, uh, without the trailer, uh, square footage is about three hundred and sixty square foot, the shed part. I think my only real concern is when it comes to permitting. Uh, I took, I took Michelle's advice and went to the county office and, and tried to get a permit. I got the, the paperwork and I just need to get the green paperwork. I gotta get the money together and working diligently doing so. Uh, not to make excuses or anything, but I really didn't know what was going on. It hit me, the, the notices hit me a, as a shock. Um, I was unaware of the fact that I couldn't be on my property, uh, over sixteen days or in my trailer, unaware of it. I just bought the property too. Just bought it a couple of years ago. And my intent was a place to park the trailer. I can't park it on Main Street, Fiddle Town, because that's where I live, right there in town. I have no room. A, a tenth of an acre, I think I have. Also, I got family, family who, who've been displaced since, since COVID. And, you know, I'm, I'm taking care of them. They're, they're in my house. Uh, it's a family of six. So you can imagine what the septic did within a, a, a year. You know, I had two years on it, clean septic and, uh, overfilled it. So there goes another. But anyways, I've got family in there and it's really kind of tight. And I like to respect people's privacy too, you know? Give them as much privacy as they need until they get on their feet, get jobs a, a, and get situated again. Find a place. And they've been looking for months. Whether they find one or not in the next couple of months, I think, I think I was given sixty days to not be around my property anymore, use my trailer, basically. Um, I think, because no one showed up for an inspection, uh, which I waited for all day. Um, they were gonna come and basically point out the things that I was being hit on. It didn't happen. So I wait for another letter. Yeah, another, another letter finally came. And, okay, it's telling me I can't live in my trailer. Okay, I get it. Um, and that's when I wrote my letter requesting to be at the hearing. And I was, and it sounded like everything I said was just, you know, uh, nobody cared. That's all I felt. That's how it felt, like nobody cares. And wow, what, what are we coming to? Who, who are we? What? Uh, yeah, I love the property. I clear it. I brush it. I burn it. I burn everything. I keep it clean. I had a trailer that had a bunch of trash in it, not household trash, just trash from the property that I bought. Um, sitting there overflowing, of course, and, and, you know, there was, I'm pretty sure it was a bear getting into it. But, you know, I had to deal with it. So I dealt with it. It wasn't a, a, a junk truck. It was a trailer. One six foot long by four feet wide trash trailer. Uh, so, you know, I got, I, I got that out of the letter. I understood it, took care of it. Didn't understand what this, the kicking me out of my, how am I supposed to stay? How am I supposed to make it look like I don't live there if I'm there all the time? I'm retired and I have nothing to do. I'm disabled. Fifty-five. I've got more metal in me than fricking. But it's all good. I just, I want some help. I can't build my shed if I get a permit. There's no engineering, no architectural, nothing on it. Some, some strong ties to things that hold everything together won't work for it. Putting square logs, stacking it log style. Six by sixes. Big. Heavy duty. It ain't going anywhere. I guarantee that. How am I supposed to permit it? I'm gonna have to tear it down and start over. And go with, you know, standard, uh, uh, framework. But with the, the logs, the outside, I don't need, I don't need any, uh, I don't need siding. Maybe some trim around the windows, doors, okay? Um, inside, no drywall, no electrical, no plumbing. Wow, this is great. Um, I don't need it. It's a shed. I, I just need to get authorization to do it or turn it in the right direction. Uh, yeah, I really don't have anything else I can come up with. I'm not as good as Mr. Hopper was. He's very, very sharp. And I thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time.
I would like to say I did see the, the shed and actually I thought it was quite nice. But under state codes and stuff like that, I don't, I don't know if we have a choice, Todd. Um, personally, uh, the shed reminds me of stuff I've seen built in a lot of old farms and ranches from, that go back to when people built stuff themselves, eighteen eighties, nineteen hundred, eighteen sixties. But, um, I don't have a problem personally with the shed at all. That's kind of nice. Um, I do have a question. By code, you cannot live more than sixteen days in a property. Is that correct, Greg? You know, in RV, camper?
Yes. Unless, unless you're, you're trying to build a structure and you get a, we just passed that.
I understand.
And the board approved it.
Right. Um, but a question I have, county council, is there a law against going to one's property more than sixteen days? Or having a trailer on a property stored more than sixteen days?
No. You can store it there. You just can't stay in it overnight.
You can stay in it for sixteen days.
For sixteen days, that's it. But I think, um, uh, Mr. Masterson has stayed in it over sixteen days for this year. But he can store his property, he can store his trailer there as long as he wants.
Yeah, and I, and I think I talked to, um, there's a request to have him remove all connections, water, power, septic. Must be completely, completely removed. And I did talk to building department about it. And they didn't see where that was a problem, right? Wait, excuse me, um, planning department. As far as, by the code, as far as I should, do they have to be removed? And they said, no, you can't use it more than sixteen days, but it can have water and septic connections.
Right, but when you.
Use it over sixteen days.
The order, the order is to disconnect it because the finding is that it's connected and it's been used illegally. And you wanna discourage the continued improper use. So you can't.
So somebody stops, stopped doing any stuff to disconnect it?
Well, the, the order is to ensure that it stops. So you don't have to make that part of your order, but I think that's the intent of the order is to ensure that it's stopped.
So that's saying, so I'm just, I'm just theoretically here. So, okay, let's fast forward five years down the road. And he decides he wants to stay one day in his trailer house or, or fifteen point nine nine days. He cannot connect that trailer house. That's what I'm hearing. Water, sewer.
I, I wouldn't interpret it that way, but that's not how, I mean, if, five years from now, and if he wants to stay there for sixteen days in that, that calendar year, I don't see why he couldn't connect it. Point is, at, at this, at this point in time, it's being lived in or used improperly. And the disconnection is to ensure that it's not, that that use doesn't continue.
Oh, it's sixteen days per year?
Masterson, you, one of the orders from the abatement hearing was to unhook the trailer. Could you, and, and just a question, I mean, maybe you don't wanna do this, but if you're, the order was, uh, to unhook the trailer from water, sewer, connections, anything else, could you move that trailer into someplace like the Forty-Niner Park and live there legally?
Legally. Legal, yes.
See, that would be, to me, that would be a viable option if economically and everything else that works. I, I know a lot of people who have run in, uh, economic issues and that's where they're living now. And their trailer in the Forty-Niner Park or another park. I'm not saying that one specifically. Not yet, sir. So I'm looking for options.
I don't see it possible.
I'm looking for options for you.
Yeah. Well, I mean, as, as it is, the time I spent out there, um, it's struggle. It, it's hard. It's hard work. I got a lot going on with it and, you know, I got started before the COVID, got stopped during the COVID and haven't done a whole lot since then with it. And then, then the COVID came in. Yeah, so I, if I could afford a trailer park, sure, that'd be, that'd be great.
I'm, I'm just looking at reality and, and reality tells me that you're gonna have a hard time getting it done.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm looking for another option for you.
Well, I was thinking, uh, if, if this or, uh, gets passed, whatever, the tiny house ordinance, is that what it was? Or three hundred and sixty square foot home, tiny homes? If that, if that comes in order, I'd, I'd pursue that in a heartbeat, uh, because I could afford that.
But in the meantime, you could move your trailer off the side to a.
Um, I don't think it needs to be moved, sir. Um.
Well, in that case.
Maybe get it away from me so I don't have to look at it.
Yeah, if you're actively pursuing, going through the permit process and everything else, you could return to the property and live on the property. you could return to the property and live on the property while, as long as you have an approved septic and power connection. But you need those to happen before you could, would be able to move back to the property to pursue building that tiny house, small house.
In my required powers, sir?
I don't know what the code says, but that would be up, up to our, our Building Department.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure.
You have water and, and, and there's a septic that are approved, right? Yeah, getting pa- getting power back there, I, maybe Bill Gates, maybe Bill Gates could afford it, it's a long ways back.
Yeah, you'd have to talk to our Building Department, Michelle. Can you come up to the mic, uh, oh, this, this is our Environmental Health Director. You have the answers?
Well, some of the answers. This is Ms. Alamo River County Environmental Health. Um, we've not received, this complaint did not come to our desk. Um, there was no allegation of discharging sewage, but I can tell you that there is, um, one expired permit for a septic system, no approved constructed septic system on the parcel.
All right, thank you. So that gives you a little more information. That makes it a little more problematic to keep a trailer on-site with no approved septic system.
I had, I had it perked, and I hired, uh, a pretty reputable contractor in the area to take care of it for me, and it-
Sounds like the, they have not followed through all the way to the end, though.
Uh, who's responsible here?
Well-
Ultimately, me, right, because I'm the property owner.
You'd have to meet with, yeah, the property owner is responsible, so you'd have to meet with our Environmental Health Department to discuss that.
How hard is it, you'd think it would be? That permitted?
So the, the, um, we have a, uh, was an issue, but an approved conventional septic system for the parcel, so it's the easiest of the systems. Um, it is from twenty-nineteen, so we would honor that, even though it had, was never issued. So there would be an issuance fee, I think it's a hundred-and-eighty or two-hundred dollars. I'd have to check that dollar amount on that. The issuance fee for that, and then you would hire a contractor to install that.
Move my septic and install-
Well, we don't have, i- if something went in, it wasn't done with a permit. So we'd have to go back, and you'd have to get a contractor knowledgeable to define what you have, if, if, if something, it might have gone in, started, but it wasn't under any kind of issued permit.
It was a contract.
Yeah, so you have to get it issued, and then we'd kind, we could backtrack and work-
I think-
The contractor has to pull the permit?
Nope, you would pull the permit. You can come and pay the permit fee and get it issued. Um, and then, the, the, we need to go in according to the permit that was drawn. But the good news is, it has been drawn. You don't need to start over. But they have to go in according to the, the specs that we have.
Okay, so you could do it in place, though, being used?
Pardon? I don't know what's being used. Nothing has been approved by us. Help.
But it very well might be an approved system.
Someone might have gone in and done it, but they didn't call for any inspections. Never got it issued and put it in with inspections.
Well, that would be a lucky break for this, though, if that's the case.
And there are some very good contractors that could help you define what you have, and see if they can verify, if they can do some digging at the ends and verify that it, how, what, what we have and how close we are to the system being proper, but just wanted to let you know.
Who pulled the permit? Did he?
Um, it was the prior owner. So we, they have an application. See, it was under Old River Road. It was in twenty-nineteen. Whoever owned it then, was that you? Yeah, so, yeah, so he'd pulled the permit. Do you remember your contractor's name?
Yes, I do, of course.
Okay. Yeah, we could provide some names also, of some reputable guys to help you.
Was that for the septic?
Yes, yeah.
That sounds like a relatively simple process for you to follow through, just to get that all permitted.
Yeah.
Tiny home thing not happening?
That, that's something you have to decide if you wanna do, but, uh, in the meantime, you might, might be better if you move the, the trailer off-site, and until you get to a point where you could come back on and live with an approved water and sewer, and then proceed with trying to construct that tiny home, if that's the way that you decide to go. Well, by the ordinance, though, as lo- what if he just unhooked everything? And he could leave the trailer there. Isn't that correct?
Michelle, there's built-in, um, sheds around it, you're kinda surrounding it, is what we, you said at the beginning?
Yeah, the, it's almost like a front portion of a house, and the trailer's connected to it. So he already said it's three-hundred-and-sixty square feet, which is required permit, because it's bigger than a hundred-and-twenty square feet to build a shed. Um, so, yeah, it's kinda surrounding it, and it's connected to it. So again, I don't know what his intentions are with it, if he's in with a shed, but-
You know, I like your idea of just unhooking it and having an inspector and saying that, that, that works, we're done, but we're gonna be back here again in four or five years if, I'm not saying Mr. Masterson would do this, but a lot of people just hook it right back up.
Yeah, but legally, you can have a trailer, you can have a trailer there. I mean, so if you, if you wanna move a trailer, I, I don't see where we can make you move that, remove that trailer. I mean, okay, questionably, I guess, we can make you disconnect the water, power, and septic. I'm not so sure about that, quite honestly. Um, if we can, but-
I didn't say require him to move the trailer. I'm putting that as a, an idea that he might be able to utilize to at least fix the, the disviolation, and, and then possibly square it up, so fix the septic system, and then he could probably move, get permission by, or legally, if he wants to construct a home, a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-square-foot home, to move the trailer back on, then I think we allow up to two years to, for living on-site.
I understand that, Richard. The thing is, I mean, people, households have limited funds, and, okay, you, you could take some time and effort to move that trailer out. Then where do you move it to? You gotta go, you gotta go, you rent, rent a spot somewhere, which, which you could do. I mean, that's, it's an option.
Well, the trailer could still stay on the property. It just can't be used. And then he's got no place to live, except for the place in town, which is already, already has a family in there. Oh, I'm just trying to provide options, but the board needs to make a decision here.
Well, you know, it's, one, one, one thing I do see, it's, we've been over this before, so I'm not gonna belabor the point, but there's a lot of people that don't have a lot of money financially, and they're trying to find a place just to live to, to survive and be happy, and it's, I understand people don't like trailer houses, but I think that, what that gentleman, gentleman said, there's probably thousands of people living in this county in trailer houses. And if somebody goes out and starts headhunting them all, uh, we, we'll be here three-sixty-five, twenty-four-seven.
Well, it's complaint-driven, and that's why we're here. That's the way it works right now.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I brought it before, because one problem I see, do I necessarily like trailer houses all over the landscape? Not necessarily, but I also understand that we have a homeless problem. Um, a lot of people are str- some people are doing qualifying financially, a lot of people are not.
But we're not talking about a homeless issue. Mr. Masterton, you indicated you, that probably would be feasible to move the trailer to a place like the Forty-Niner RV Park and afford the fees there?
Sure, sir, if I could. I, no, I couldn't afford Forty-Niner there. Couple grand a month. Used to be about nine-er, a thousand-hundred, and they doubled it, so.
Wow.
That would not work for me. All that where I'm at. It's feasible for me to go to my house in town, yes. You don't want me to use the trailer, I'm, I'm gonna conform. I'm gonna, I'm gonna obey the laws. Uh, you want me to disconnect it? I'll disconnect it. Ms., Ms. Gallagher here, uh, mentioned that she would be glad to come out and do a, a, a pre-inspection before another inspection, or the final. And give me a, a little, a walk-around, or have someone give me a walk-around on the details that I need to be looking for, so I can, so I can pass that inspection. Doctor remove, uh, you know, my camping goods, my clothes from the trailer, uh, the, you know, lock, do I need to board the windows up? What?
Rip, rip the roof off it, maybe, I mean, you know, whatever.
Uh, yeah, even take, take it, uh, it's, it's a front and a partial side, a partial side, the, the, the shed part. Um, just logs, so. It wouldn't be much to take it down. Couple days, I'd probably get it down, so. It's a, a, a raised foundation with logs stacked on it.
I'm gonna, sir, could you add a comment earlier, or are you still wanting to comment? If you have, come up to the mic if you're going to, and please state, come, come on up, sir. Please state your name for the record.
I'm up here, one of the next people. Yeah, I just inquired about the space rent at, uh, Forty-Niner Trailer Park. It's, uh, twelve-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars a month.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, Board, um, there's no further comments. Looking for some kind of an action here.
Um, well, make a motion to, um, to adopt the hearing board's findings, and recommend that, uh, Mr. Masterson not live in his trailer. He can store it at his property, but he can't live in it. Um, it would be nice if, uh, he, if he needed the extra space because of, you know, the other people living with him, move it to the Forty-Niner Park, but I understand that, uh, he may not be able to do that financially. But I think that's, that would satisfy the conditions that code enforcement has set out. He stops living in his trailer.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Good, and second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
Oh, no, two.
All right, motion carries three to two. I think you have some alternatives, sir, and we're willing to, I mean, Michelle will work with you, and I think there's, uh, a couple of alternatives before you get the septic done. I, I think that would be relatively easy, so.
Just don't wanna be, uh, drug around and have to pay a bunch of fines for something that my fault, but I just, I just ignorant of, of, of the laws, the county laws.
No, I don't, I don't see any fines.
So I'm gonna pursue, uh, a permitting, starting with my, my, my septic, and, uh, start working on a house, or, or maybe they'll grant me the shit, they're not gonna grant me the shit.
I mean, you're a veteran. You should have access to some VA loans, too, and, and things like that.
I do. It's just, a loan means a bill. I, I have enough of those. I have to, I have to save money, and I have to get out and, and, and hustle up a couple of jobs. I'm a builder, or was, so I have some talent. And it's, people like it, so. I, I get a little bit of work. Um, but I still, you know, I get, a thousand bucks was hard for me to come up with.
Uh, Mr. Masterson, one thing I, I, I would say, if you, if you look at building a place, look at the a- access requirements, because, you know, you get steep driveways and stuff, that can be a problem. So you might wanna look at that before you figure out where you decide to build.
Yes. All right, sir, thank you. All right, we'll move to item six C. This is, um, Murky Road, Pine Grove.
Ms. Gallagher, Code Enforcement, this is for, uh, Code Enforcement versus Miguel Molina. Located at one-two-nine-zero-zero, Murky Road, Pine Grove. Uh, property owner is Miguel Molina.
Is, uh, Mr. Molina here today?
Uh, he's not. I don't see him in here.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Uh, on April twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, county staff observed the following violations on the subject property. Unlawful campsite, occupied and unapproved structure, and installation of unpermitted wood stove. On April twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, county staff sent the landowner a notice of violation related to the above referenced observed violations. On November ninth, two thousand and seventeen, county staff sent the landowner a notice of violation regarding occupancy on the subject property without a permitted portable water source or permitted wastewater system in violation of section fourteen-point-twelve-point-one-forty. On March twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, the county sent the landowner another notice of violation by certified mail for the above referenced violations, and requested a property inspection. Staff also posted a letter at the subject property. On June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, county sent a notice of violation by first-class and certified mail regarding the following violations. Unpermitted structure, California Residential Code Division Two, administrative section R-one-oh-five-point-one and R-one-one-thirteen-point-one. Unlawful disposal of liquid waste, CCR Title Twenty-four, Part Two-point-five, two thousand and nineteen, CRC Section Three-oh-three-point-zero and Three-oh-three-point-one. And unsafe structures and equipment, two thousand and eighteen, IPMC Section One-oh-eight. On February ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, county staff inspected the subject property and observed that the violation had not been corrected. On April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, county staff sent by first-class and certified mail notice of violation regarding uninhabitable occupied structures, unsafe structures slash equipment, and unpermitted building. The notice required corrections and permits by April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. The notice was also posted on the premise. On May sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, county staff mailed the landowner a notice of prosebatement of code violations and notice of intent to record a notice of violation regarding the unpermitted unsafe structures. The notice was also posted on the subject property. On June first, two thousand and twenty-two, the landowner submitted a written request to appeal the violation. Staff was provided significant legal notice of the, uh, last hearing and today's hearing, uh, and was provided a meaningful opportunity to be heard. Hearing board finds that occupied, unpermitted, unsafe structures continues to exist on the subject property in violation of California Building Code Sections One-oh-five-point-one, One-eleven, One-eleven-point-one, One-sixteen, and One-sixteen-point-one. I've been in, um, correspondence with Mr. Molina. Mr. Molina has so far, uh, removed his dog from the property. Um, he is, uh, as of this morning, he did send me some documentation of, uh, place that he has found, um, and currently, too, has also put his property up for sale.
Would the, the structures have to come down by this order? Even if the property's up for sale, the structures, illegal structures would have to come down, correct?
So because these structures are less than a hundred-and-twenty square feet, um, they're allowed as long as he's not living in the structures. So that's why we wanna make sure is that he doesn't live in the structures. That can be an option to abate them if he continues to live them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then I do have, uh, one of my witnesses here, though, as well.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a question. Um, there's a couple photos in the packet. Five forty AM. Is that photo, I'm trying to figure out, what is that, of a license plate, or?
I don't have the picture in front of me, but those were provided by the complainant to prove that he was staying there overnight.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a license plate, probably, then.
Yeah, is it reflecting, and you can't read it?
Really small. It looks like, almost like upside down.
Yeah, it would be a license plate, because that will never come clear in a, in a photo when you take it, unless it's daylight.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that it?
Comments? Any public comments?
Uh, good morning, just barely.
Good morning. My name is Sean Deanda. I am the neighboring, uh, house to Mr. Molina's parcel. Um, I'm here to ask the board to move forward with the complaints that have been, um, made over the, the years, that have gone neglected. Um, and the problem persists and has grown, uh, exponentially, uh, over the past year with, um, matters regarding, um, waste and garbage, uh, which is now, at this point in our lives, has created an erodent issue, which has come up to our house. And mind you, we are fully vested in Amador County. We are, you know, paid residents. We did our building. We, we're, everything for us, we've done right, and in discussing matters with Miguel, have come to the conclusion, outside of his remarks, that he will never pay for any of the, uh, building requirements, because he doesn't have children, he doesn't have any family members, and so forth and so on, that he has no intentions of building. Well, at that point, I have made it in my, in my own mind, that having no water, no septic, and having the smells, and the safety issues come up- that having no water, no septic, and having the smells and the safety issues come up to our house, especially in extreme weather or heat, is a problem because we live upwind. I would like to see the Board move forward with these matters because I've been in the, in these departments since two thousand and fifteen making complaints, and it has been neglected, hugely neglected, um, and in the beginning, working with, um, Mike Israel and Kevin Sparks was a wonderful time. You know, they were the two that helped me, uh, that were up there doing our building inspections and had, you know, worked with them upon my complaints originally. And somewhere between there and transitioning new here at whatever's gone on, new down here and COVID hit, there's a gentleman by the name of Todd, which has become an extremely difficult individual to work with. Not only did he not tell me, not only did he tell me he was unaware of any of the situations that I had, you know, brought up to his attention, but, um, he told me that they were understaffed and too busy to attend to the matter. And thankfully enough, at some point between Michelle and Health and Michelle Gallagher here, somebody stepped up and finally came out, and that person is Michelle Gallagher, and I applaud her for that because nobody, out of three complaints that were left high and dry, Michelle finally showed up and we're moving forward again. And I'd like to see this problem for me move forward and get resolved because the corrective action has been neglect, neglected for too long. I appreciate you guys' time.
And you said there's, just before you leave, this been going on since, um, two thousand and sixteen, I think, but, and on the June third visit by Michelle, she said, there are documented, there are, coming from the health side was a strong human waste smell, I attempted to locate it, I could not see anything. So, um, exactly what, what I said earlier is that the effect on the environment and the neighbors is, um, a big issue that, that's why we can't allow some of these things to just keep going on.
Right.
Appreciate you being here today.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Um, just another comment, I said it at the hearing, but we're, I apologize for, you know, taking so long, so, um, maybe, uh, maybe we can do better in the future, so, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. All right, um, any further public comments? Board action?
Um, I'll make a motion to adopt the hearing board's findings and recommendation on, um, APN zero-three-eight dash two-six-zero dash zero-three-two and move forward without further notice or hearing.
I'll second that.
Good and second, and any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Now to our last hearing today. And this is a very thick packet.
Yeah.
So, let me see. Looking for the address, in Fiddletown Road, Fiddletown.
One-four-six-four-five.
Correct, go ahead, Michelle.
Michelle Gallagher, Code Enforcement, and our County Department, Code Enforcement versus Scott Esben. Located at one-four-six-four-five Fiddletown Road, Fiddletown, APN zero-one-four-two-four-zero-zero-six-six. Subject property owner is Scott Esben. On May eighth, two thousand and thirteen, county staff visited the subject property and observed unpermitted and unsafe structures. On May seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, county staff inspected the subject property, observed electrical violations and occupied, unpermitted, unsafe structures. On or about July tenth, two thousand and eighteen, Bill Easton, Board Chairman of the Fiddletown Community Service District, complained about improper water and gray water connections and the occupied, unpermitted, and unsafe structure of the subject property. On or about August twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, uh, county staff mailed a notice of violation by first-class and certified mail to the landowner regarding unsafe electrical violations per Article two-two-five-point-two-six and two-thirty-two-point-four of the California Electrical Code. The notice was also posted at the subject property. On June ninth, two thousand and twenty, county staff inspected the subject property and observed occupied structures that were unsafe and unpermitted. On August, on April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, county staff received complaints and, uh, photographs showing that the violation of the subject property had not been corrected. On May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, the county sent a notice of violation by first-class and certified mail to the landowner regarding the unpermitted water and sewer system. On May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, county sent a notice of violation by first-class class and certified mail to the landowner regarding the occupied, unpermitted, and unsafe structures, the unpermitted electrical, and the unpermitted grading. The notice was posted at the subject property, the notice required corrective action and permit by May twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-two. On May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, county sent the landowner a notice of proposed abatement of code violations and notice of intent to record a notice of violation regarding the following: unsafe and substandard structures, California Building Code Sections One-Sixteen and One-Sixteen-point-one; Health and Safety Code Section One-seven-nine-two-zero-point-three; occupation of unpermitted structures, which is California Building Code Sections One-point-eight-point-four-one, One-O-five-point-one, One-One-One, and One-One-point-one; and unpermitted electrical, California Electrical Code Eighty-nine-point-one-oh-eight-point-four and four; and unpermitted grading, Amador County Municipal Code Fifteen-point-oh-four. On June second, two thousand and twenty-two, county staff posted the notice of proposed abatement, code violation, and notice of intent at the subject property. June seventh, the landowner submitted a written request to appeal the violations. Staff provided significant legal notice to the landowner of the hearing and today's, um, hearing. The hearing board finds the following violations continue to exist on the subject property: unsafe and substandard structures, occupation of unpermitted structures, unpermitted electrical, and unpermitted grading. Uh, again, been having, uh, correspondence with Mr. Esben, Mr. Esben's been coming in, uh, speaking with several departments, which I will have them come up and, and speak, um, but, uh, so far, Mr. Esben has obtained his grading permit. Um, he is trying to end discussion, it's kind of, I'll, I'll let him come up and say what he wants to do, but originally it looked like he wanted to go ahead and legalize the structure. Back in two thousand and eight, the illegal structure that is now it's a garage, um, did get a permit, but was never finalized, so it was recorded. So Mr. Esben has known since back, uh, since two thousand and eight that this, uh, uh, building is not legal and he should not be living in it. Uh, with our conversations that we've had, uh, with several of the departments, um, we've made it very clear exactly what he needs to do, and so, um, so far, it's, it just goes back and forth on what he wants to do and, and not, uh, uh, be able to obviously accept the responsibility of what needs to be done. So I'm hoping that today, when the departments come up here, it's very clear to him again, exactly what he needs to do. I am going to read what the building department provided for me since they couldn't be here. So what is, uh, Todd is going to look at the garage plans this afternoon, uh, because Mr. Esben wants to go ahead and just submit it for, uh, a garage now. Uh, he expressed that he's going to try to find somewhere else to live, um, and wants to convert the garage. So he will look at the plans this afternoon, as of right now, the plans are okay for just the garage. We will take the plan review fees today after the hearing, and then when Todd approves the plans, we will contact Mr. Esben to take the remaining balance and issue this permit. If Scott is wanting to convert the garage into a living space, he will need to submit an electrical floor plan, Title Twenty-four, fire sprinklers, plumbing, and updated floor plan showing the bathroom. Toilet installed without a permit does not count as a bathroom and will need to be removed or permitted and inspected. A kitchen and all electrical plans. If it is allowed to have an off-grid solar, but he will need to get this permitted as well, he will need to bring an engineer stamped plan for his solar system along with a plot plan showing where the system is located.
Any questions? All right, Mr. Esben, do you have, uh, any presentation you'd like to speak, sir?
I didn't know if you wanted to hear first from environmental health and, uh, Public Works on what they wanted him to do, so that way it all ties in. It's up to you.
We can, Michelle?
Michelle, again with environmental health, um, yeah, so Mr. Esben has been directed, and we've been in touch with the CSD, he is required to, um, connect to both public water and public sewer from the CSD. Uh, we have an email from the CSD dated July seventh with what he needs to do in order to initiate that. He has a right, already a purchased right is my understanding for the septic. He needs to install a tank to their standards and to then make that connection, he also requires a plot plan. Astrowater, he has a dollar amount quoted to purchase that water right, and he needs to connect. So in order to, to live on the property, those are the requirements for environmental health. He is not allowed to drill a well because he is within the CSD and it's their purview to say they do not allow a well within their boundary. That help?
Okay.
Thank you. Need to hear from Public Works, who's gonna, who's going to present? Come on up. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, uh, Mark Hopkins, Public Works. Um, I know that some of this is going to revert back to the bridge project on Fiddletown. Um, currently, the county is not in the business of putting in something new that hasn't already been paid for and/or installed. So currently, we are waiting for Mr. Esben to go ahead and have a connection to the sewer and water lines put in so we can deal with them when we build the bridge, which are going to be a year to two years out. So, at this point, having him wait for us is why, because we will deal with it at that time. Um, one of the things that has also been brought up and will probably be brought up is PG&E has disconnected his electrical back in two thousand and eighteen. Um, that was done at a time when he was able to cross two properties. Currently, PG&E does not allow that per PUC anymore. So each pole, a pole has to go for an individual property, and he has two properties connecting together. So at that point, he doesn't have any electrical, uh, um, for this area, for, for this area. Um, from that, I do know that we have given him over fifteen thousand dollars starting back in two thousand and twelve for temporary construction easements from that point forward. So he's had plenty of money to go ahead and do some of the things that he could have been doing to bring it up. So, and I have all the documentation, the ex, uh, all of the, um, invoices, things like that to show that, yes, he has had them. You don't have them, but I do have the ability to provide them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Esben, would you like to make any comments?
Um, yeah, I'm Scott Esben. Um, I, did, did you all get a copy of, uh, kind of the statement to where I'm at?
Yes.
Um, did you get a chance to read it?
Nope.
Instead of me just reading it out loud, uh, if you read it, then, you know, I think that, that's pretty good. Um, it takes a lot more than fifteen thousand dollars to convert, uh, a shop to a residence. Twenty, I figured back when, it's like twenty-eight thousand just for the permit fees, let alone the huge amount of other expenses that go into making a legal residence. And I haven't had that up until recently. The building department has been very lenient and, uh, very good to work with, but I wish they'd be a little more honest, you know, and work closer with code enforcement. Instead of just getting told that, uh, complaint-driven, we have to, uh, send out these violations, but we're not going to really do anything, probably. And then all of a sudden, you know, this has happened rather quickly. And I wonder why it's happened. Uh, does it depend on who's driving the complaints? Is that at issue, if someone has more power than someone else, uh?
No, I, I think we're trying to do a better job of enforcing, but it is complaint-driven. But I think we're trying to do a better job of enforcing, and, uh, we have a good code enforcement officer.
Well, and then the steps that I've been taking, um, now I list them here. I did get a well permit, and I understand from Bill Easton, the president, that I could drill a, a well for geothermal. I had planned on doing a geothermal system, solar and geothermal system, taking the cool water from the well and using that through like a radiator, not, not a manufactured high-dollar, uh, system, but more of a homespun thing. I don't know if that would be approved or not, probably take an engineer to, uh, stamp something like that, I'm sure. Um, but that, that's kind of a small thing in the scope of all of it. I did submit the plans, so they didn't take any payment, uh, so they're going to take payment this afternoon and kind of tell me what I need to do with their existing plans as built. Um, and as far as demoing the unpermitted shed, it's really a funky shed, I never planned on keeping it up. It was always just very temporary, and it's un, it is a little unsightly. I'm sure that hasn't, the neighbors haven't appreciated it, so. I, as I stated here, if you read it, I told the neighbor I was going to go ahead and tear that down and remove everything this year, because technically it's on their property. And then I wanted to go the other way, uh, and correct the boundary lines on the other end in my favor and kind of try to take care of all of that, uh, before going ahead with the building and get going for permits. Um, so even before all this started, I was making efforts to do something, and, uh, and then I kind of, this has just been a big wall I just, just ran into, um.
Well, I got to say, sir, it's not like you haven't a little time to work on it since two thousand and eight. So this has been going on a long time and, and eating up a lot of county resources trying to, to work with you to get you to move along.
Well, I wish there'd be clear communication with the building department. They would say, you know, don't worry about it almost. I mean, I, I don't want to criticize them because I thought they're, they're being gentle, they're being whatever, uh, telling me it's probably nothing's going to happen.
Well, I think you can work with them, you can work with them now. That would be my, 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 uh, advice, is work with Mr. Barr and our building department now and try to, try to move forward.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Esben, you've had, you've had a lot of time.
I haven't had a lot of money, so the choices have, haven't been there, and you get, like, let me skate, you know, so I've skated, and, uh, and it's time to shift up, and, and I'm ready to do it.
We don't, we don't go looking for these things. It just, it, it, it is complaint-driven, and when people complain in some point over time, uh, it, it's an issue. I, I, I take no joy in these things at all.
Well, the, the weight of who complains, I think that should be, that's almost a political issue that, I, I wonder about that, you know?
No, I don't, I don't think it's who complains, it's, it's just when the complaints come in.
Uh, he has some weight with his department, doesn't he?
No, no more than anybody else.
No, is that right?
No, not the way I look at it.
Well, and now I'm blocked from tearing down that shed supposedly.
Well, if it's not on your property, it's probably not your shed.
Well, when fence lines are up, I went by the fence lines when I first bought property. How does it go in court? I mean, is it almost a legal court?
I don't know if we can say anything about the legal issues.
In the jurisdiction of the building department to determine that?
I think you would, if you talk to the building department, they can give you a pretty concise answer on how you should proceed.
Well, I think Todd could, right, maybe, but not, not Samantha.
Right, and they're not going to get involved in the legal side either.
Right, I would think that's out of their, their deal.
Anything else, sir?
Yeah, there's, you know, just, well, I was saying, basically, the communication, I've got this stuff in writing about the complaints, and I've got this stuff in writing about the complaints and all. But, uh, the way some of the other people before me said, it'd be good to have someone come and walk through on the property with you what's happening and actually talk to you. That's, that, just very recently, you know, I've talked with Michelle Moore and, uh, we've communicated. But to actually walk the property, uh, I think, I think that'd be good, you know? Maybe that's social work and out of the jurisdiction, but I, I think it'd help everyone.
So I, I don't think, you know, I mean, if there's something you need staff to come out and walk through the property, I think they've been there a number of times already, I believe. Uh, haven't you, Michelle?
Not when I was there, yeah, I wasn't there or I was inside and I didn't even know they were there.
Yeah, I can't speak for the other departments when they did it, but at least for my notice, when I went out, there, there wasn't. But he also, he went ahead and appealed at the time, so, uh, he wanted to move this forward, so, yeah.
No, I don't think, I don't think you'd have a problem with someone to meet with you and look, look at, I don't think she'd have a problem with that at all.
What are you saying again now?
If you want, if you want to have her walk the property with you, I don't think she'd have a problem doing that at all. But I mean, I think it's pretty well, what's, what the issues are are pretty clear, it seems like.
Well, the electrical, they cut the power, I haven't taken those wires down, so I don't know if that's still an issue or not in the.
Y- yes, that wouldn't, would need to be removed. That's unsafe.
So that is an issue, that, that clears that up. The grading, you know, I, I called for inspection yesterday, so it didn't happen. Um, and I said, if you read the statement, you know, Michelle thought that was a mistake that they didn't, they wanted to put off until fall to come out and inspect.
So I told Mr. Espin, he needs to be able to talk to those departments on what needs to be done. But as far as you're talking about an inspection, when you submit those plans, the building department will come out and look at all that and tell you, obviously, because you do have to bring it up to today's codes. So they're going to let you know what you need to do based on what you decide you want to do. So we've made it very clear to him, if he wants to convert it to a livable space, depending on if it's going to be an eight hundred square feet right now is what's required. But if it goes down to three hundred and sixty or sixty-five, whatever it's going to be, that could be done in which he was, uh, that sounded like something that he wanted to do was to go ahead and do that. We told him if he does that, the first thing that has to be done, which has already been expressed to him by environmental health, is he has to get the water and septic in. Because the building apartment will not issue him a building permit without those things approved. So that's his very first thing he needs to do is get that situated. Once he does that, he can submit his plans for either converting it to an illegal, a, a legal structure or cover, or converting it back to a garage, which if he decides a garage, then he cannot stay there. He'd have to find somewhere else to live. If he converts it to a legal structure, once he gets the permit, uh, into the building apartment and they have been approved, then he will go to the, uh, planning apartment to apply for a use permit to live in a trailer while building. This has all been explained to him step by step, exactly what he wants to do.
Right now, so you're saying I have to have a legal water and sewer connection to finish the, the garage?
That is, if you.
To live on the property.
Right, right, to live. I don't want to live on the property at this point.
If you're going to have a garage though, because you talked about using the restroom, the outhouse that you currently have, you cannot have that. Michelle said, no, can't have that. If you're electrical, if you're going to use the off-grid solar, you have to provide, as it said in there, engineer plans and all that stuff. So either way, you're going to need water to connect to it, uh, I'm.
For a garage, I need water?
She's shaking her head, yes, so.
Well, and Michelle.
No, she said.
Having water and sewer, you can only live on the property, you can only live on the property if you're planning to build a habitable structure.
Correct, and to be habitable, you have to have hot and cold running water and, oh, and approved sewage, means to dispose of your sewage. And the current outhouse over the septic tank is not approved.
Right, the purpose of allowing someone to live on the property is so that they can build their structure to live in.
Correct, so what we, we get clearance, uh, so if we have a trailer while building come over to our counter to approve, we would make sure, normally that means a septic, in this case, a sewer and a water are in. And it was onsite septic, same thing, the septic system needs to be in and they move on that construction trailer and they connect. That all needs to be done first and then they can go ahead and move forward on their building permit. Does that make sense?
But for the shop?
The shop, if it's no plumbing, and if we were, we were, we were given a shop permit with no plumbing, no habitation.
That's the way I submitted originally.
We would not require a water and sewer if it's not habitable, but you can't be there.
There's a question, question for you. On the hearing board's direct, recommendation number two, uh, it's directed to remove the illegal structure within how many days? There's no number put there with the sixty days?
It was sixty days, yeah.
That's in number one, apply there?
Yes.
Which is that, the shed, the funky shed or my garage?
This is all your, all your unsafe substandard structures.
Oh, both, both structures?
Yes, well, the other structure, as he brought up, because it's on somebody else's parcel, the building apartment is currently trying to contact them to come up with a way to see if that can be approved. Because again, it's not your property, even though you put the structure. So as of right now, as I said, we want you to focus on the illegal structure that you're living in right now, on what you plan on doing with that, until the building apartment figures out with that based on.
I certainly don't want it torn down. I mean, uh, so I really need to.
Yes, the building department said because it's an illegal.
Building department is going to approve as far as what I have so I can move forward.
Well, and maybe when we make a motion on this, we could clarify that portion to, uh, reflect the, uh, decision of the, uh, building department after contacting the adjacent owner.
And I have a question on that order too. Um, order for administrative abatement. It talks about in there, um, remove illegal, illegal structure in so many days. Um, alternative, Mr. Espin makes substantial progress towards abatement of violations. Um, continued substantial progress, means applying for and pending water and sewer permits. If he's not trying to live there, he wouldn't have to get those water and sewage permits, correct? As long as there's no plumbing.
Correct, he'll have to remove all the, yes, but in the future, so he knows, based on Public Works, if you don't have something there legally, they cannot plumb you in when it comes time to the bridge. So you know that. Take that in consideration if you ever plan.
Changed from what I was told from the engineer, but I guess that's latest, so.
Yeah, so in his plans and when building goes out, he would have to show that all plumbing's been removed. That's currently there also as well as electrical unless you submit a permit for your solar as they request.
Okay, possibly, um, we can finish our business and Mr. Espin, you could talk to Michelle and discuss just what's being said here for clarification.
Yeah, I'd say either way, the sixty days that we're recommending is that he's obtained his permit. Doesn't have to be done, but he's obtained his permits of whatever direction he's deciding he wants to do. So it's whether making.
I've already decided and I made it clear, I want to convert the garage. Not convert the garage, but finalize the garage.
Finalize the garage.
Is sixty days sufficient time then, or should we?
The building apartment feels, yes, it was, that's why that timeframe came up.
I have a lot of building materials all over in that shed and, uh, I have a lot of, uh, materials in, in my shop too, so, boy, if I could get a little more time, I'd sure appreciate it.
This is to obtain your permits, so you have your permits. And then that timeframe that's provided is when you're doing that. You have sixty days.
Just get the permit, not the vacate the whole thing.
Submit your plans, everything, everything has to be turned in and you're moving forward within that sixty days.
Yeah, that project does not have to be completed in this.
That's correct, yes. The case will not close until obviously the timeframe that the building department gives him. If he doesn't comply by that timeframe, then we're back here again and violating the order.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Espin, thank you, Michelle. Looking for a motion from the board or is there any further discussion?
No, I'd make a motion to drop, adopt the hearing board's findings, recommendations.
Um, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second, so, um, with, I guess you're going to check with the building department about removing the unsafe substandard structure and, because it's on someone else's property, right?
Yeah, they're working on that, so that's something that if it can't be controlled, I mean, we're going to work on that part. He can control the garage part, but that part's depending on, uh, what we get from the owners of the property.
Okay, sorry, second.
Okay, thank you. With that, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 I oppose, most carries, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Espin.
Yeah, thank you.
Remember, that sixty days goes by fast, we'd appreciate you, so you can, moving forward to you won't be back here. Okay, we're going to go back on our agenda now, does any member of the board need a break? Okay?
Better done.
Then we'll go back to.
I might need a little break, a minute, I could.
You need a little break, okay, well, just five minutes?
Yeah.
Supervisor, okay, we'll take just five minute recess. All the meeting back to order and go back to our item, um, General Services Administration, item five E, Community Economic Resilience Fund. Mr. Hopkins, good afternoon.
Uh, good afternoon, John Hopkins, General Services Director. Um, yeah, that's what I'm here to talk to you about, the Community Economic Resilience Fund, known as SURF. Um, as you, uh, as I gave in my, my packet there, you'll see one document where the state of California with these funds developed thirteen regions and put Amador County in the eastern region and, um, outlines a bunch of things for, for SURF as well. And in order to move forward with this, this, uh, uh, these funds, we have to apply for it. And in doing so, we needed an organization to apply for us as well as administer this program. And Sierra Business Council was targeted for this and they are here today via Zoom to give the board, uh, detailed information, answer all your questions and, uh, hopefully also get a, uh, approval of the partnership agreement letter that I've got there in my packet, uh, for you guys to approve to move on. Uh, in, in this case, I think I'll move on to introducing Steve Frisch with the, uh, Sierra Business Council and see if he can't share a screen and, and move on with the presentation.
Good after, good afternoon, everyone. Um, I suspect I'm standing between you and lunch, so I'll try to make it brief today and I will share my screen real quickly. So, uh, my name is Steve Frisch, I'm the president of the Sierra Business Council and we are applying for the Community Economic Resilience Fund grant, um, from the Labor and Workforce Development Agency. So I'm going to walk through that real quick and then, um, kind of describe the commitment involved in the collective partnership agreement, so.
Hey Steve, take your time, we, we have all afternoon.
Okay, great. Um, so a little bit about Sierra Business Council. We're a regional five oh one C three nonprofit organization serving the entire Sierra Nevada region, roughly co-terminus with the boundaries of the Sierra Nevada Conservancy. So we do a lot of work on natural resource issues and, and other things. But we also manage a number of economic programs, including the Small Business Development Center for northeastern California. So we work closely with your small business development centers. We manage the Sierra Economic Development District, which is the economic development district immediately north of you. We also have written SEDs, or Comprehensive Economic Development Strategies, for several of the counties in the Sierra Nevada, administer U.S. Economic Development Administration programs across the region and also administer the Gold Country Broadband Consortium. So we have a lot of experience in this kind of economic development field. We also work closely, um, on this process with the Central Sierra Economic Development District, who we see as kind of a critical key partner in this application and in the planning process that will ensue. So the role that we are applying for is to act as both the fiscal agent, so that is the receiver of the funds from the Labor and Workforce Development Agency and the regional convener, so convening the planning process as a neutral convener for the eastern Sierra region. So what is the SURF? It's a one-time use of state general funds that will distribute roughly six hundred million dollars to regions across California to support inclusive and low-carbon economic development. It has been developed by the California Labor and Workforce Development Agency, specifically EDD, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research and the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development. So the intent of the program is to identify strategies that can be implemented in order to create what are known as high-road jobs. So these are jobs that pay above area median income in whatever area the planning process is going on in. So the SURF program, as, um, John mentioned, the state has been split into thirteen regions. Each region will receive roughly a five million dollar planning grant. That planning grant would be deployed over a two-year period and there would be an economic development strategy that was the outcome of that two-year planning process. This would include labor market analysis, industry cluster analysis, workforce education and training program identification and analysis. So there would be a focus on identifying gaps in workforce education and training and opportunities to scale up workforce education and training programs. We'd also look at the crosswalk with other state funding sources and federal funding sources in an effort to create leverage for future funding for projects. And then, um, the planning grant could also include investments in capacity for organizations that would be future implementers of these projects. And we've had pretty extensive discussion with the Central Sierra Economic Development District about them being not just a critical partner, but also a recipient of capacity building funding so that they could scale up their activities in the region. So phase one is the planning phase, which would take roughly eighteen to twenty-four months. And then at, um, at the conclusion of the planning phase, or sometime near the second half of the planning phase actually, implementation funding would come available. So there would be roughly five hundred million dollars in the implementation funding, um, awarded across the thirteen regions of the state on a relatively competitive basis. But we are making the case with the state, as are most of these regions, that that funding should be split in forty million dollar tranches to each of the thirteen regions in the state. And interestingly enough, it seems like the Bay Area and Los Angeles are going along with that idea as well, which is quite remarkable. So the region that Amador County is within is identified by the state, is the eastern Sierra region. It's seven counties, um, so, um, including Miriposa, Tuolumne, Cala. It's seven counties, um, so, um, including Miriposa, Tuolumne, Cala Rares, Amador, Alpine, Mono, and Inyo. And, um, twenty thousand square miles, roughly a hundred eighty-six thousand people. The map on the screen shows the other regions of the state. So you can see, there's a large variety of sizes of geographies and population bases across these thirteen regions, and we think that each one is gonna require kind of a separate economic strategy, which was kind of the, the origin of this program, was the recognition that California is not one economy, nor is it a state that can be served by a single strategy, that each region actually, um, required specialized attention. So, once we submit the grant application on July twenty-fifth, um, we expect an award of the planning phase contracts in September and a project start date in October, at which point this eighteen-to-twenty-four-month clock will start ticking to work on the economic development strategy, um, for the region. The requirements for Phase One planning, um, that we're working on right now are identifying partnerships and coalitions to work with in order to develop the plan. We've provided quite a bit of materials to the board as far as what the vision and goals and types of stakeholders and other things would be. Uh, we will be required to look at and coordinate with other planning efforts within the region. So, for example, I know that the Central Sierra Economic Development District is doing a comprehensive economic development strategy. It would be our intent to coordinate with that very closely so that, um, we're not being duplicative and that we're incorporating the strategies that are also in the SEDs for the Central Sierra Economic Development District and the separate SEDs that was done for Amador County under a separate U.S. EDA grant. So you can expect to see many of your priorities that have already been established incorporated within this plan. And, um, I mentioned already that we've provided a vision and goals document to you guys to review. And then also, um, there's quite a bit of analysis that we're in the middle of doing for submitting the application, um, um, right now. So, we're in that process and expect to have, um, a grant application done by the twenty-fifth. Um, we have been working with stakeholders across the community through a series of webinars and lunch and learn sessions and one-on-one outreach. I met with, um, John a couple weeks ago in Amador County to talk about some of your local priorities and needs. Um, we are also working on an existing economic, um, development and climate planning analysis for the region so that we can see how the different state priorities align um, in order to kind of identify places where we could be looking at workforce training, broadband deployment, things like that as economic strategies. And then, um, we're also working on kind of identifying what the likely economic and climate resilience opportunities are. I will let you guys know that looking at the current economic drivers in the region and the potential high-growth sectors that we've identified so far, forest management and biomass utilization is very high on the list, and I know that's a significant concern in Amador County due to the threat of wildfire. Uh, climate and energy innovation, including things like energy efficiency, alternative energy, water efficiency, water utilities in these drought times, um, those are clearly growth industry opportunities. Uh, sustainable tourism, healthcare, and then, um, education and social assistance have also been identified as high likelihood clusters that we would be, um, we would be looking at. The partnership agreement letter commits the county to participate in the process. The level of participation is entirely up to you. There are a number of different opportunities to participate in the governance structure that we're proposing. Um, the process would be led by a High Road Transition Collaborative Council that consisted of twenty-one members and a non-voting chair, um, so that the chair of that committee doesn't have a stake in any of the decisions that are being made. We're anticipating there would be three members from each county or cities within the counties. Um, there's also a committee structure that would matriculate ideas for the development of the plan to the council for their approval. There would be an Equity Climate and Labor Committee, a Business and Workforce Development Committee, a Local Government Committee, a Data Planning and Drafting Committee, who would be primarily responsible with vetting and drafting elements of the plan, and then a Project Committee that would identify potential projects for infrastructure investment later on down the line. So, um, so what we are seeking today essentially is your participation in the process at whatever level, um, you choose to participate. It could be as a council member, it could be as a committee member, or it could be through your involvement with the Central Sierra Economic Development District. So, um, with that, I'll hand it over for questions and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just for clarification, Steve, did, on the makeup of the, uh, the committees and the, the board, do you want electits on there or is the preference to have staff level on there?
Yeah, that's a really interesting question because it is a, as you notice in the materials, serving on the council is a relatively robust time commitment. So, you know, we would be happy to have electits there, but it might be more efficient to have staff members there um, or to have, um, an elected or a staff member serve on one of the committees. One of the things that we are looking at is having the council represent the diversity of the required stakeholders. So the council would not be entirely composed of local elected officials, but they would be welcome to serve there.
Other questions?
Uh, Steve, so this is, uh, this governance structure, this is the same for all of the regions? This is what the SERF, um, you know, people have decided? Or is this, uh, Sierra Business Council's?
Yeah, each region is required to propose their own governance structure, which is kind of ironic because in the, in the lead-up to the program planning, when they were doing early meetings, um, the development of the guidelines, we had suggested they come up with a government structure, so we didn't end up with thirteen different ones, right? So, we drafted this government's, this governance structure for inclusion in the application, but it could change once the application is approved. So, just, just to be clear, the governance structure is not entirely etched in stone. If, um, if there are requirements for adjust, adjustments, then that council could adjust the governance structure.
Some of the other regions might have a different governance structure, correct? Okay.
So, for example, Los Angeles is proposing a governance committee of almost a hundred people, which I think is somewhat unwieldy for our region.
Supervisor Brown? Yeah, this is Supervisor Brown. The one question I have is on the, uh, low-carbon, uh, part of this is, you know, as you talked about getting rid of some of our abundant fuel in the mountains, that's not low-carbon. So, how strict are they gonna be on this?
Well, actually, um, if you look at carb regulations and the state's bioenergy strategy, biomass utilization, either through power or, um, other value-added wood products like biochar, small diameter timber, chips, post and pole, um, uh, cross-laminated timber, all of those would qualify as low-carbon activities because of the avoided emissions from open pile burning and other activities. So, we've been very careful to talk to both OPR and GoBiz about whether or not biomass utilization counts, and it does. So.
One of the things I've gone through in a couple meetings is, you know, dealing with like hydrogen and other things, and they were not calling hydrogen low-carbon. So it's kind of a, a weird, you know, thing through, dealing with the air board.
Yeah. No, and as, as you probably know, um, the California Air Resources Board is updating their AB thirty-two scoping plan right now. And, um, conversion of biomass to either fuels, um, or hydrogen or power is currently in their proposed scoping plan, um, identified as a low-carbon activity. So, that could change over the course of this planning period, but we're not anticipating that it would because, um, both the North State and the North Coast region are also looking at biomass utilization as industry clusters that they would then be able to invest in.
I just wish we've done this about ten years ago.
Yeah, this supervisor forester, I agree with, um, that biomass should be part of the mix, but historically, the, uh, Air Resources Board has not favored, or the environmental community has not really favored biomass very highly. So, I think we really should look at trying to get them, their rating equal to some of the other areas. And, um, some of the environmental, um, nonprofits out there, like Center for Biological Diversity, they've actually sued our biomass plant in Amador County, our previous biomass plant that's no longer in existence. So there were a lot, there's a lot of hurdles for biomass plants, and if the state would, uh, rank them as favorably of some, some, as some of the other alternatives, it would be a good thing to do. Just one more point, um, in Mr. Hopkins' staff report, he indicated that the state, um, may not rank housing and, um, what was the other one, John? Housing and, um.
Broadband.
Broadband.
Br, housing and broadband is high as some of the other areas because there's, uh, already a, uh, a lot of funding for those endeavors, it says. So, you, you had already mentioned broadband, Steve. Do you think, uh, we can get past that hurdle? Because that's a, a big area, and it's already been shown, the money that's out there, the funding is probably not gonna be enough, and it's gonna take a long time to get that endeavor done.
Yeah, so, um, here's the advice that we've been getting from GoBiz and Labor and Workforce Development, that if the plans include recommendations for ongoing investment in broadband and housing, and then identify potential future projects that could be tied to other state funding sources, for example, the seven billion dollars in broadband funding that was approved in last year's budget, the planning process identifying those projects would be fine. What they have been hesitant about until they have guidelines for the implementation phase is saying that implementation funding could be committed to broadband and housing. So, I, I suspect what we will see when the implementation phase guidelines come out in October is that, um, broadband and housing are gonna be directed to other state funding sources like the California Public Utilities Commission CASF Fund or the HCD Housing Funds, um, for infrastructure investment. But, you know, what I'm really hoping that we come out of with this is essentially a list of regional projects that meet your local economic development strategies that could receive ongoing infrastructure investment, and then look at various different state and federal pots of funding to fund those projects and use the SERF implementation funding as essentially leverage to leverage other state and federal funding pots. That way, the forty-million-dollar investment could actually lead to a larger-scale investment within the region.
Hey, thank you. Do you think, um?
Just as a follow-up on your, uh, comment on biomass, I think, you know, the purpose of the SERF is, you know, creating a more sustainable community, and I can't think of anything for the eastern Sierra region that's gonna make it more sustainable, but being able to deal with, um, you know, the abundance of biomass. Um, you can have all the housing and broadband you want, but if it all burns down, it's, it's of no value.
Well, I agree with you. That's why that discussion needs to take place with the, with the, with the nonprofits that are out there that, that don't like biomass funding and find a way to get around that.
Well, it doesn't always have to be burning of, uh, of wood chips to make electricity either. It, you know, could be the biochar, it could also be the, um, you know, mulches and small diameter thinning projects and things like that.
The plant here used to burn tires. That wasn't very good.
We won't talk about that. Anyhow, just, I, I think we, uh, we need to fi, have this fight now. Um, you, you know, we can't let, um, you know, the folks that, uh, you know, I think they mean well, but, um, they, they're just not understanding the complete picture. We need to make a stand.
Yeah. Steve and, and John, just one more question on, one impediment to us getting industry in here in the past is lack of sufficient power. Yeah, I know we tried, uh, to bring a Lowe's plan in at one point, and that's one thing they cited. They didn't have high-power lines coming in. So is that something that could be looked at? Or do you think it'd be unfavorable in the eyes of the, uh, the state at this point?
So, uh, the, their definition of infrastructure for investment is pretty broad. So it could include physical infrastructure-like power lines. The key to it will be the ability to tie the infrastructure investment to the creation of, um, what, what they're, what they define in the project as high-road jobs, right? So, um, so if the, if the installation of power lines is gonna lead to employment, um, then I think, I think that is an investment that they would consider as, as eligible, right?
And as long as it has a regional benefit.
Yes.
Has to have a regional benefit too.
Yeah. But I, I wanna be clear, we're not gonna have full clarity on that until the guidelines for Phase Two infrastructure investments are released sometime this fall. So, um.
With what he just said, it's really important, I think, for the board just to say, yes, we're in agreement. We'll send you the letter. That gives him the, the, uh, another letter to put in his portfolio to apply.
Yeah.
The grant.
Yeah, you know, this is Supervisor O'Neal. I have a couple of questions, Mr. Frisch. Um, the information you sent talks about, what is a CRF? Um, and it goes on to support inclusive and low-carbon economic development. Um, question I'd have is like, uh, aren't most extractive-type industries, um, at odds with a, a, a low-carbon, uh, development?
Yeah, I don't think that's true. Um, so, for example, um, if you look at the state's forest management policy as it's being developed by the California Forest Management Task Force and its attempt to meet the million acres per year of thinning or land treatments to reduce wildfire emissions. Um, but, to the extent that forest management reduces emissions from wildfire, which the California Air Resources Board is now required to measure, um, that would be a low-carbon investment because it would be avoided emissions, right? So, so, you know, we have had conversations with GoBiz, um, and with OPR about whether or not, for example, forest management or utilities or power generation would be eligible under this program, and the answer has been yes. So there are other extractive industries that, um, that might not qualify. So, for example, mining, I'm not sure what the status of mining would be in this, but clearly agriculture and forestry would qualify. So. So.
Yeah, something I wondered about, it'd probably be, it's probably a real reach, but you look at Highway eighty-eight, um, going up the mountains, and you see them, they pave the highway, and unless they go and start doing recycling in place, they haul truckload after truckload after truckload after truckload of, um, asphalt from down Sacramento, Lodi region. I mean, I've wondered about, hey, would there be a possibility of having a quarry up in the mountains somewhere to where you didn't have to haul stuff, um? you didn't have to haul stuff hour and a half, two hours east direction, fully loaded. You know, sometimes there's, there's things like that. Also, I was looking.
Before you move on, can I just add on to that?
Sure.
I, I, as far as agriculture, the timber industry, I, I don't know why we can't look at placement of a smaller sawmill processing facility in Amador County. Right now, Steve, we have logging trucks driving from Eldorado County all the way through Amador, all the way to Sonora because there are very few processing plants for logs in the state. So you're talking about emissions, you could significantly reduce the emissions if something like that was done.
Yeah, I would, I would tend to agree with that. I, I really do think that the intent here is to align these processes with other state policy. And the, you know, through CAL FIRE and CNR, the Natural Resources Agency and the Forest Management Task Force, local biomass utilization through things like small diameter timber are definitely consistent with state policy, right? So there's a lot of money right now going into developing small diameter timber mills and alternative uses for biomass. Through CAL FIRE grant programs and through CNRA grant programs and and even through the low-carbon fuel standard. So conversion of biomass to other products, I think, is entirely consistent with this program.
Supervisor Neto, back to you.
Yeah, I was looking at your proposed governance structure on the HRTC council.
Yep.
And he looks like you have five different boxes would be part of that council. Represents the diversity of required stakeholders. Is that the five different boxes, like Equity Business Local Data Project Committee?
Yes, that, the committees are designed to represent or, or to have participation from the stakeholders identified in the process. And, and are intended to be open in their membership in participation, but only have seven voting members, right? So, so I would anticipate that on that committee, there would be community-based organizations. You know, there would be labor organizations, there could be environmental organizations and other entities within that committee structure.
So you're talking basically the stakeholders, boxless tribal representatives, environmental justice advocates, labor organizations, community organizers, public agencies. Where is spots for businesses, the general public?
Yeah, business is definitely included in that stakeholder list as members of the, well, in the grant guidelines themselves. And as our members of the general public.
I think, Brian, that's just a generalized list as an example, to give you an example. It's not outlining the entire grant.
It's not all of them. So if you look at the
I, I would have thought general public and businesses would have been one of the first people under stakeholders or one of the first boxes. Bullets, I should say.
Well, for example, our stakeholders list, you're familiar with ours through our SEDs. I gave that to Steve. They, they have that.
Okay. So the full stakeholder list is included on page ten of the grant guidelines, and it includes government agencies, economic development agencies, businesses. You know, all of the, all of the kind of broader group of stakeholders that, that
Okay, that's goo- that's good to hear, Steve.
And I can ensure you, as the Sierra Business Council, business is awfully important to us, right? Like, we're gonna, you know, in, in their stakeholder list, employers and businesses are the, are the second bullet point. So. So if we left it out, it was completely inadvertent. We're all about creating jobs.
And I, this supervisor forester, I'd like to serve on this committee because I, I think that's our job as electives to be part of the process and represent. I mean, that's what we do every day. I, I just, I, I think it's important to have the critical staff there, but I think it's important for the elected to have a face and, and input on the committee too.
Well, that's true. Wholeheartedly agree with that.
I was hoping you'd say that, Steve. And back to what you said about the committee structure, I think it's important to have the environmental community represented on there. One, for the education process. For an item like biomass, we, we need their buy-in to get acceptance as, as something like biomass is so critical.
So I hope the board recognizes that Sierra Business Council has done a lot of work just to get to this point in order to apply. But they do need your, your support as well as the other six counties in order to, I think, be successful in applying, just applying for this money.
You have a letter in here, a sample letter that
We do have a sample letter sent. Yeah, the board clerk, Jennifer, has it and is ready to go if you guys approve it.
It's in our packet addressed to the HRTC convener.
Well, it needs to be modified.
Yeah, yeah, of course. We're not going to say mono counting.
Yeah.
Yes, and as soon as you guys get, Steve, I, I'm assuming that an electronic copy of that is fine for you.
Yes, that's fine.
It can be signed electronically.
Okay, board members, any other questions?
I'll make a motion then to approve the partnership agreement letter.
Second.
Are there any further staff comment?
No, I just, I really appreciate Steve taking, them taking a lead on this because we don't have the resources to do it. So thank you, Steve.
Well, I, I would like to say thanks to John, John Hopkins for all of his help through this. He's been great to work with on this process.
Okay, with that, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Most carries five zero. Steve, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Under comment, I will say I voted yes, my fingers crossed, because I do have some some concerns over this inclusive and low-carbon economic development. If you do any research on that and get looking into some of the papers that are written on that, oh, boys, it's something. Talks about inclusive institutions are crucial for enabling structural change by facilitating different process of creating destruction, creative destruction. And it's, it's an interesting article. So fingers crossed.
Okay, thank you. Go to our last item, five G, the minutes. I submitted
Move to approve with corrections.
Comments. Did everybody get the last page? Of the minutes where the one page I had where was missing a motion closing the public hearing. So I just want to mention that my last page was missing. So, so that's in now. Okay, good. So there's a motion. There are second.
Second.
I was wondering if anybody wanted to end the meeting or not. Okay. With the corrections, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, most carries. Board has one more item in closed session, so with that, we will adjourn back to closed session.